Not now either?
There you go.
Yes.
All right, perfect. There we go. Thank you. Welcome. All right, aside the technical issues, it's 7:02 PM on January 8, 2024. My name is Kevin Ellis. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board. I'm going to call this meeting to order. As we do, I'm going to read some brief introductory notes first. One moment here. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Act 2023 suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law. You hereby advise this meeting and all communications during this meeting may not be recorded by the town of Hingham, may be recorded by the town of Hingham in accordance with the Open Meeting Law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify me at the start of the meeting in accordance with NGL Chapter 38, Section 20F. So I, as the Chair, may inform all the participants of said recording. All right, not seeing anyone. Let's do a brief role call, just so I can introduce my colleagues on the planning board. I'll serve as an attendance. Gordon Carr?
Here.
Tracy Schreiber?
Here.
Gary Tondorf-Dick?
Here.
Rita DeSilva?
Yeah.
Here.
Perfect. And as I mentioned, I'm Kevin Ellis, and we're joined by Emily Wentworth and Michael Soder, who our staff day is on this evening. So with that, we can get going. We have a pretty packed agenda. The first item on the agenda is ANR, which is an approval not required for 210 Hull Street and 311 Rockland Street. With that, who here from the applicant is going to present on this?
So Deb Keller with Merrill Engineers and then surveyors.
Welcome.
Buddy, I can share my screen quickly, and we can look at the Form A request.
Yep, go ahead, Deb.
Thank you. So, okay, there it is. So on behalf of the applicant, Jerry Rankin, and the current property owners, being the Lincoln Trust and the Robies, we're looking to subdivide 311 Rockland, which is a unique shaped lot here, this long strip, and 210 Hull, which includes this larger piece. So what we'd like to do is subdivide and create what we have called out as Lot 1, to remain as 210 Hull Street, provide Parcel D to Parcel C, which is a portion of 311 Rockland, to create a buildable lot. So that's Parcell C and D with the adequate frontage and lot area. And there are two other parcels, Parcel A and B here, which Parcel A is a portion of 210 Hull. B is a portion of 311 Rockland. These two parcels are non-buildable but are intended to be combined with the adjacent property 301 Rockland Street. These, what I just described is identified on the plan in Notes 8, 9, 8, 9, and 10, I believe. Correct. Identifying parcels that are to be combined. There is an existing home on 210. No existing dwelling currently on 311 Rockland Street. I'm happy to try to answer any questions.
Thank you, Deb. Turn over to members of the board. Colleagues, any questions?
Kevin, I had some.
Please, go ahead, Gary, you first.
Yep. You sure? I mean, I don't have to go first.
Yeah, no, no, your, the, yeah, our questions are likely the same, so.
Yeah, I was going through the plan, and I was going through the application, and I was trying to get a sense of the, of the rationale, because I'm seeing a series of lots with solid line meets and bounds. And I don't see on the application a description of what you're doing on the application. So it's somewhat, now that I've listened to your earlier presentation, it's a little clearer. I had a number of questions here, and I just was going back through the, the Form A requirements and the subdivision control by law. And one of the things I was looking at relative to the lots here is that some of the lots are shown with all of their meets and bounds and other, and I'm, that is because they're part of this ownership, whereas other lots on the perimeter are shown with partial meets and bounds. So I was trying to get clarification in the, in the subdivision control by law. And under Section 3A2H, basically, the meets and bounds of all existing lots whose dimensions are altered by the plan and of all proposed lots and of any contiguous lots in common ownership with, you know, that are subject to this plan have to be shown. So I didn't see in the earlier description, nor do I see in the narrative on the plan, that, for example, Lot 1, I was looking at that as to, you know, it's clearly part of this. And I'm trying to understand, you know, our, our role under this Form A lot is to establish that you have frontage and so verify that you have frontage, and secondly, that you have, you know, vehicle access. So I'm looking at Lot 1 and down to the lower right of the sheet, and I'm seeing that, you know, this is a new lot that would be created, but I don't see that it meets the frontage, because the frontage is, this is Residence C. I believe this is Residence C. And we need 150 foot of frontage, and I bet there's 117.73. So my understanding is when we create a new lots, a new lot, then all the, all of the, you know, the lot has to comply with the current bylaw, which is 150 feet. So I don't understand that. And the documentation that would be, you know, because what I have is, is what, what we have to review is what's in front of us. And, and so I'm just going on what I'm seeing, and I have a number of questions on, on the lots. These are being the, let me give you all the questions, and then you can answer. So the, so what we have here is you've shown the setbacks from the structures on Lot 1, which is required. And you, you basically aren't removing any structures here on Lot 1, because you meet the current setbacks. So what we're talking, the issue we have on Lot 1 is frontage. So then I look at Lot 1, which is now connected to Lot 2, Parcel D. You know, the other thing I wanted to find out on Lot 1 is how much of Lot 1 is upland and how much is lowland? You're showing on Parcel D everything that's up. You're noting that it's all upland, but I don't see that same note on Lot 1, which I think we probably need to see on the plan, just for clarification. Just since there isn't, you know, so everything we're approving is written on the plan and not assumed. So, so then I looked to Lot Parcel D, and I was trying to understand what's going on here in terms of Parcel D, Parcel C, and then also what you've got going on here on Parcel A, which then is part of this 335, I guess. So I'm looking at that, and I see that you have the meets and bounds shown all the way around, and I'm seeing that there are two structures on the lot. So in order for this not to be a buildable lot, it seems to me we, we can't have structures on it.
Are you speaking of Parcel D?
Yes, I'm parcel, now I'm referring to Parcel D now.
Yeah, okay.
In all of these, this, this subset of comments. So the, so what I'm concerned about, there are existing buildings on that lot. So it seems to me there has to be a note that they would be raised, or, you know, we're not creating a buildable lot. At least that's what I'm understanding. So, so what I'm thinking is, I'm looking at the notes, 7, 8, and 9. And I'm thinking that basically, you know, in the bylaw, relative to what we say in terms of, you know, a lot, not, it's a non-buildable lot, and it's not, not in compliance with the zoning bylaw. That is a very specific note that's called out in the bylaw, and I thought that that should be written on the plan on these lots. So it's clear, typically, when we do Form As, we have a statement right on the lot, right on the drawing, which says that the, that basically, the endorsement is set Paragraph 2C, which is endorsement of the Planning Board shall not be construed to be a determination of conformance with the Hingham zoning bylaw, which is typically what we have on Form A lot plans. I don't see it here, and I think it should be on the plans.
Gary, let's, can we just go through these one at a time, because I'm getting a little lost in our questions.
Yeah, okay.
Can, I mean, can you pose, please, the, you know, the questions in order, one at a time, and we can let Deb here answer them, to the extent she can?
Yeah, so the Lot 1, the question I have is, is that the upland and the lowland needs to be shown if, if, whatever, or if it's there. And then, secondly, the frontage is not, doesn't meet the current bylaw. It would be a new lot, so the frontage would have to meet the, the current bylaw requirements in Residence C, which is 150 feet.
Deb, can you walk us through that?
So in regards to the upland, Lot 1 is considered all upland. It's noted right under the lot area here. So as far as, my understanding is, there are no low line, no wetlands associated with Lot 1. Again, 210 Hull Street currently includes what we're calling Lot 1 and Parcel D and Parcel A. So those three properties, I'm going to call them that for right now, make up the current 210 Hull Street property. So with respect to the frontage, that is the existing frontage that exists now, which we can't, we are not touching. So the only thing we are doing with Hull Street is maintaining the, the frontage, which rightfully, it does not meet the standard, but that is the existing condition that's out there now. We are maintaining the proper lot area to meet zoning, but cutting off what I would call the back piece to provide those parcels to other properties.
And Mike, can you walk us through whether or not, when we're dividing this, you know, 210 lot, essentially, that it needs to have conforming frontage?
Yeah, so the boards are similar application, it's not the exact same, but several months ago, where a portion of a lot was actually being added, in this case, it's being taken away, but there's no new non-conformity being created. So the fact that there's deficient frontage is, it exists today. It's not changing at all with the new lot, I mean, the new line that's going to be going there, for lack of a better word. But there's no new non-conformity. So the, the applicant is, is not creating any, any dimensional deficiency. The area of the lot is still well exceeding over what the, the requirement is. So if, Gary, let's say this, this Lot 1 was being created for the first time, and they propose to build on it, then you, you would be corrected. They wouldn't be able to build on it, but there's already structures there. So there's no new non-conformity being created. So it's, it's, you know, it's not, the board's not endorsing anything that would be a zoning violation, essentially.
But it is a new lot. The, the, the meets and bounds here are new. So we're creating a new lot, and the bylaw is quite specific about when we create a new lot. It has to, current bylaw requirements in terms of frontage.
Yes and no. So the, the lot exists there today with an existing dwelling on it. By adding the line down the middle, essentially, you're making the lot smaller, but there's no change otherwise. So the other, other than lot area, which is, you know, going to be a little bit less than what is there today, all the other conditions that exist today still will exist. If the frontage was being diminished, then that would, that would be an issue, but it's not in this case.
Well, I, I still don't agree, but in terms of what the bylaw requires. If we were to move to Parcel D.
But so the, Gary, just to respond to that, this is not deemed to be an interpretation of zoning, as, as you mentioned, which is noted under the signature line. So the boards, I'm making a zoning determination, the board's making a determination of, does this constitute a subdivision, or does it not constitute a subdivision? That's what Section 51P.
Also, what our, what our charge is, is to determine if it has adequate frontage. That's pretty clear in the bylaw relative to Form A. And so I'm focusing on frontage, which I don't see that Lot 1 meets the bylaws requirements. There isn't an exception in the bylaw for a lot that exists or, you know, is pre-existing on the frontage. Basically, it's quite clear, if we create a new lot, we have to meet the current frontage requirements.
There's no new non-conformity with this existing lot? So there's no, there's no violation?
Well, it's a new lot, Mike, and thereby it has to comply with the current bylaw. So it isn't about conformity, it's about complying with the current bylaw. So I disagree.
Mike, your point is that all the other lots are new lots, but this one is an old lot, just smaller?
That's correct.
I think I would take.
Can they re, can they reconstruct that structure that's on there?
That would be up to the Building Commissioner. I'm, I'm not going to make a determination based upon what is something that he would have to say. You know, as I mentioned, the, the board did have a similar application, I'd say about six months ago, where an existing, there were two existing lots, one of which was granting lot area to another lot, which had deficient frontage. The area non-conformity was being eliminated, but the frontage non-conformity was remaining. It's the same case here. And in, in fact, in that case, the dwelling was proposed to be raised and then rebuilt. And, you know, has been, it's on, I know it's on the Building Commissioner's desk, and from my understanding, it has, it's most, it's most likely going to be issued, but it hasn't not been yet. We're hitting on a couple of things, but, so I'm not going to speak on something that hasn't been issued yet or reviewed, but basically, what I'm trying to say is that it, in that case, it's, it's fine. I hesitate to make any sort of zoning determination, because it really is outside the scope of, of this.
Right, which we're not making a determination. I think that one of the things on the plan overall is, we have a number of lots here that are being proposed to be created. And we have a number of, and, and in that process, there is a combination of lots. And typically, when we combine lots under a Form A, the lot line, if it's going to be one ownership, which is what I understand this, this is, Lot 1 and Parcel D and Parcel A would all be under one ownership, then it seems to me that these, in these intermediate or these inner lot lines should have a Z in them. In other words, we're, they're not all separate lots, because right now, as separate lots, as shown on this plan, Parcel D, for example, has no frontage. And the, also, the other smaller lot, which is, I'm assuming a new lot configuration, you know, 301 is there, but it looks like Parcel A is being sub, you know, being split up into Parcel A, Parcel B, and I think, as far as I understand it, where the house is, is 301. I guess that's a separate lot. So it seems to me, if you're going to combine all these into one lot, it would be helpful to have an existing conditions plan. And then to have this plan, which shows, or to have a plan that shows what you're proposing to do, which would show the combination of the, the outside meets and bounds, but would also show these inner meets and bounds is, these lots are fundamentally connected. So.
Gary, so that's, that's called out in the notes, so there's no requirement for the applicant to put the Z on the plan. An alternative to that would just, to be to mention it in the notes section, which is, it's mentioned there, which, you know, what the existing lots are, and then, you know, what the plan would be in terms of the combination.
But what I'm looking, what I'm looking at is that Parcel D has no frontage. Parcel D is landlocked, because it's a separate lot line. The lot, the meets and bounds don't go to the public way.
No, mine is, is where we identify combining that Parcel C and D are to be combined to create a buildable lot, which therefore would then have that frontage that runs from between these two points here, which is part of Parcel C, and then your lot area with the two combined meets, meets the requirement.
So it seems to me that you should have a plan that shows the combined lots without the separate meets and bounds. You know, that the lots are.
That's what the ANR would do. So if the board endorses this, then this would get recorded to the registry. And then, you know, if the applicant wanted to record an 81X plan, they have the ability to, which would eliminate, which would erase the lot line. But this is the first step in being able to do that, because there are three existing lots today with lines that are just changing.
Yeah, I still don't think this plan meets the requirements of the bylaw. So I think it's based on those two sections, three, Section 3A2H, and I think that we need to take another look at that. And 2C, I think that that should, needs to be shown on the plan on the lots, because right now, the notes are general, but we usually show that note on the specific lot. So the, the note's different on Lot 1 than it is on Parcel D, yet both lots are shown as part of this ANR. One's buildable, one's not, but you don't know that, looking at the plans, and you don't know that Parcel A, for example, or the other one closer to Rockland Street, you know, none of those are buildable. I, I just think it should be shown on the plan in order to have this, this submission meet the bylaw requirements, the, the specific requirements of the bylaw. And I understand the intent of what they'd like to do, but I'm just looking at what's in front of me, and I don't think the plan basically shows that compliance. So I think that, that that should be looked at.
All right, thank you. Tracy, Gordon, Rita, any thoughts on this? To me, the notes seem to cover this, but.
I, I guess so. I mean, I, you know, and, and maybe I'm just obtuse, but, you know, Mike, if I were to ask you in your professional opinion, is this the, the simplest and most obvious and efficient way to describe what they're trying to accomplish? Because it's like, it, it, it feels way more complicated, the way it's presented. And I just, you know, I just wonder, you know, but is this, is this really the only way that, that they could present what they're trying to do? With these notes and with this graphic? Or is it just what they're required to do, and it doesn't matter whether it's, whether we, we can understand it or not, because it's a Form A, and we just have to approve it and move on, right? I, I don't, you know.
It's kind of both. We, we did actually work with the applicant prior to their submitting this plan to get it in the best shape as possible, which is what you're seeing right now. It was much, it is a confusing plan, just by nature, it's confusing. But that doesn't necessarily mean that it's incorrect, or that it's missing information. It's just a confusing plan, because we're dealing with, you know, ensuring that lots have certain area and frontage, and we're dealing with two existing lots, or three existing lots today. So it is a little bit confusing. I, I totally sympathize with you with that. But to your question, yes, this is, this is the, really the clearest it could come in.
We don't have to understand it. We just have to approve it.
And, and hopefully, the, the end goal with this plan is that you're going to have three lots that are more conforming than they previously were.
Well. No, that's, that's a little self-serving, right? You're going to have a total lot that's more conforming. You're not going to have a lot that's there with plenty conforming, right? I mean, so that's a bit self-serving, Deb. It gets you to the goal of getting a building, a buildable lot.
Yes, but what I'm saying is, if you looked at this long sliver here, which is right, currently, right now, 3, 311 Rockland Street, it has frontage, but it doesn't have adequate lot area. So now we're providing lot area from 210, and now allowing that to, to be a buildable lot, as you were saying, that will now have adequate frontage and lot area. And we're providing adequate frontage to 301, which did not have adequate frontage before. So now that has legal frontage and more area, so that it's less non-conforming than it was previously. So that's all I'm saying. I, I understand exactly what you're saying is, yes, ultimately, they would be getting a potentially a buildable lot out of, of working, you know, reworking these lot areas, but just trying, trying in the end to, you know, make more conformances with frontage and lot area, yes.
But Deb, my concern is, is that this plan doesn't say that. I mean, you have to, there has to be an explanation to this plan. But the only, the only lot here that has frontage that meets the current bylaw, there's only one lot here that meets the frontage, and that is the little thin lot Parcel C, the skinny little lot Parcel C. None of the other ones meet the current bylaw. Because the bylaw is pretty clear. If you, when you create a new lot, it has to conform, the frontage has to conform with the current bylaw, and that's not happening here.
Well, we are, because 311 here will have two, over 200 feet. We're providing adequate frontage for 301, which did not have the adequate frontage before. So now it will have legal frontage of just over 150 feet. So, and then we're not, rightfully so, we're not touching Hull Street, so that remains at the, you know, just shy of 118. So that is correct. But we are trying to remove this non-conformance or frontage by providing adequate frontage for 301, while remain, keeping frontage for 311.
So Parcel C and Parcel C and Parcel D would have to show as one lot on this plan in order for that to work. And right now, they're showing us two. That's my concern. This is that, you know, this has to be specific as to what it's showing in terms of compliance with the bylaw. And you have to sort of interpret and assume, and, and we can only go on what's in front of us, not what's in the notes. It's really what the plan is showing. So I, I think the notes should also be on the specific lots on the plan, so that it's clear. And they're out somewhere, but I think they should be on the, on the lots themselves.
They're here.
Gary, the, this is, the notes are what helps to enhance your vision of the plan. The board has never required the notes to be on the specific lots. It's just not what the, the common practice is.
Well, it has in my, it has in my time, Mike, so.
I, I think, you know, the notes are probably adequate, and I'm sorry, I've missed the last handful of minutes of discussion. But the reason why the parcels are being created is in part because there's going to be transfers of those areas. So those have to be defined on the plan, so that we can understand what deed is transferring what land to another property owner. The notes then tell us what will become newly buildable lots, and there is just one.
So under that reason, Emily, it seems to me that the, there should be one plan that shows the summary of that. Right now, it's, I don't see it on this plan.
What's there?
In the notes.
Notes.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't see that it's that clear. If someone were to look at this who hasn't had the benefit of the discussion, I'm not sure it would be clear.
All right, Gary, noted. I just, I'm not sure we're going to get to a conclusion that's satisfactory to you outside of a resubmission of the plan. And I'm not quite sure what we'd ask on the resubmission of the plan. I mean, I've never, I mean, I've been on the board five years. I've never seen the notes indicated on the parcel. They're always listed as notes on the plan. And, you know, Tracy, Rita, Gordon, do you have the same concerns as Gary? Would you like to see a resubmission here? I mean, I, I don't think what they're trying to do is not allowed. So I think that we would just be asking for a resubmission that clarifies that, if that's a problem for you guys, and that's perfectly appropriate.
There's no opportunity for a resubmission. The deadline is Wednesday for this. And there's, it's past the 48 hours where we'd be able to post an agenda. For this. So the board has to either approve or deny this plan tonight.
Thanks, Mike. And that's, that's an unfortunate aspect of the timing of this meeting, then, I think. I mean, well, with that, then, I mean, I guess the question really is for the board, are you inclined to deny this, because it's not as clear as it could be? You know, the denial, that would, you know, cause time initiation or resubmission for them.
Seems to me that a, that a plan that clarifies it would be, would be appropriate.
Yeah, I, I disagree with you, Gary. To me, this is relatively clear. I mean, the notes do what they're supposed Yeah, I I disagree with you, Gary. To me, this is relatively clear. I mean, the notes do what they're supposed to do. You know, absent like kind of color coding or something, which is not part of, you know, these a black and white plan like this. I don't, I don't really see. Any need for additional clarity, but I think that's where I stand. That's my opinion. Tracy, Rita, Gordon, you know, we have to move forward on this a bit.
Kevin, I understand what they're trying to do.
Okay, thank you, Rita. Tracy, Gordon, your inclinations?
I think I'm okay with it.
Yeah, to the extent that I've that I'm gonna understand it, I understand it. I guess I appreciate staff's. Efforts in making it as clear as it is. You know, we don't, we don't really have any say over these four ways. I don't know. So I probably shouldn't be wasting our time, so. Especially if there's, there's no opportunity, so.
All right, Gordon, thank you. I mean, I understand that, Gary, and understanding your concerns. I I I think we need to move this forward. So I'd make a motion, we move to endorse pursuant MGL, chapter forty one, section eighty one P, the plan entitled Approval Not Required Plan, prepared by Maryland's in years and lands of heirs. Four two seven Columbia Road, Hanover, MA, dated October twenty four, two thousand twenty three. Is there a second for that motion?
Okay.
Thank you, Rita. And then a roll call vote, Gordon?
Hi.
Tracy?
Bye.
Rita?
Aye.
Gary?
Oppose.
And I'm an I. Emily and Michael, I mean, my takeaway from this one is maybe we need to talk a bit about the way these appear, if you have any say over that, and then we can make them more, you know. Palatable to the board, you know, as a general matter, so we don't kind of run into some of these obstacles up front. All right, the next item on the agenda is twenty six La Zelle Street. This is a site plan review. Julian Alejandro Rodriguez filed an application for site plan review under section one I of the zoning bylaw. Reconstruct a single family dwelling with associated landscaping, hardscaping, grading, and drainage of twenty six La Zelle Street in Residence District C. Who here is going to present for the applicant?
Yes, this is Gregory Morse with Morse Engineering.
Welcome.
Good evening. I'm going to do a share screen and put a copy of the site plan up for everyone to see. Can you see that on the screen?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you. So again, my name is Gregory Morse. I'm a registered engineer with Morse Engineering, representing the property owners. Julie and Alejandro Rodriguez, who are on the Zoom call tonight. Also on our team and with us are the architect, Mike Bracino. And the home builder, Dave Pratt. We're here seeking site plan approval. This is a raise and rebuild of a single family home at twenty six La Zelle Street.
Do you hear that? What the fuck? That was my old plan.
This, this was presented to the commission. This was presented to the planning board back in December. We since took the comments from the board. We revised the plan and resubmitted it. But to refamiliarize you with the site real quickly, the existing. Home at the site is located right here where my cursor is. The lot itself is depicted by the bold black lines. With La Zelle Street being off on the left. The lot itself is fifty eight thousand four hundred and fifty square feet. It's entirely upland land area. It's in the Residence C zoning district. The home that's there was built in nineteen sixty three. You'll see that the home, the driveway, in the shed in the back of the existing home are all centrally located kind of on the the front half of the lot. The back half of the lot back here where the cursor is, this is all undeveloped natural woodland area. There are some significant ledge outcrops back here, but it's essentially all wooded area. We have developed residential homes above us on the plan here. We have Wampe Tuck State Park off to the right. And vacant land on the bottom of the page as well. The proposal is the raise and rebuild with a new two-bedroom, single-family home. That new single-family home is right here. Depicted. It's a two-bedroom. It improves the site with a new driveway. The new driveway has the same curb cut location out at La Zelle Street. But we're taking the driveway and we've shifted it off of the lot line. It used to be two feet off of the lot line. We now maintain a minimum setback of five feet to the property line along the entire length of the driveway. We have an attached garage. We have a subsurface and on-surface drainage system and significant landscape. Proposed around the house, including a swimming pool and a patio in the backyard. The objective in how we located this work. Was we tried to locate all of this work on the previously developed portion of the site to the extent practicable. We looked at the locations of the ledge. We looked at the locations of the existing driveway and the existing utilities on the site when we cited the home. And the improvements thereon. The limit of work, which encompasses the entire site, the entire developed portion of the site, is twenty two thousand four hundred and seventy square feet in size. Of that twenty two thousand square feet, fifteen thousand four hundred and ninety six square feet of it is previously developed. I think it's important to bring up these numbers because we are retaining. Thirty five thousand nine hundred and eighty square feet of the lot, which is sixty one and a half percent of the lot. In undeveloped, natural woods conditions. Since the last meeting, the revisions that we made. Were with respect to this site plan and with respect to the landscaping plans, there were no architectural plan changes to the house itself. We submitted those with a cover letter on December twenty ninth. Those revisions, as I previously stated, were with respect to the driveway, which we had shifted over from the side property line. Our previous submittal had five trees that were being removed along the driveway. We're now able to preserve those five trees. We are proposing to take down one tree along the side lot line. It's at this location here. It's a fourteen inch caliper tree. In its place, we're proposing to plant six four-inch red cedar trees. Those six trees are located here as well as two along the frontage on La Zelle Street. So it's a total of twenty four inches of caliper mitigation for the fourteen inch tree that's being removed. We took a look at the grass depression. We had a grass depression out at the front of the site here where the driveway comes in off of La Zelle Street for stormwater. I think there was concern about the size of that depression. We were able to look at the calcs and reduce the size of that depression. We were also able to pull it a little bit further off of La Zelle Street. So that now we have a minimum setback between La Zelle Street's right-of-way line and that depression of twenty feet. And it allows us to keep where my cursor is, three trees, which were. Previously proposed to be removed, we're able to keep those in place. So relatively no impact to the aesthetic as you drive by on the site. We updated the overall stormwater calculations, the O and M plans, both construction phase and post-construction phase for the site. Specifically, we looked at the crushstone trench. We had a crushstone trench on the top side of the driveway here. We've relocated that to be on the bottom side of the driveway here, so it's further on our property, further from the lot line. We also added two crushstone trenches in the rear yard. We have a crushstone trench here and a second crushstone trench here. Those are to promote infiltration of surface runoff coming off of the hill that is out behind us. Promote recharge to the groundwater supply. The. The board had made a request that we look at the use as well as roof drywells. We added a roof drywall system to this house. The gutters at the front of the house would be connected to roof drywells, which are located right here. It's a total of twelve drywells, which would be installed. Would the submittal this went to Pat Brennan for a review? I believe Pat is on the call tonight and will speak to his review, but I believe we've satisfied his comments. He did make some suggestions on our details for those crushstone trenches, which we incorporated into the plans. As far as the thickness of mulch or loam over the top of those trenches. In conclusion, the Rodriguez's desire to build a home that's a total of three thousand three hundred and sixty four square feet gross living area. It's a relatively modest home for Hangham standards. It preserves sixty one and a half percent of the lot in its natural, undisturbed vegetated state. It's in character with the neighborhood. There are several homes of similar size or larger size, certainly on La Zelle Street and Union Street. And certainly within the Residence C zoning district. The plan meets your stormwater standards and meets the peer reviewers' standards. We hope that the changes that we made address the comments that the board previously had. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Morse. First, I appreciate the presentation and, you know, the looking at the plan based on the board's comments. I'll open up to the board, but I just want to make sure we thank you. For taking them to consideration to heart. Pat, maybe it makes sense to start with you, actually, just while we have you here. Read your peer review letters, the updated letters, but anything you want to draw our attention to as a board or review with us?
No, thank you, Kevin. Like Greg said, when they submitted their revised design, I looked at it. Reviewed the drainage calculations. Everything worked as it did the first time around. I made a couple of suggestions about the crushstone trenches and how to better get water into them. And they revised the plan based on those recommendations and. You know, what you have here meets all of your standards in terms of stormwater, so I'm comfortable with it and be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you, Pat. With that, turn it back over to members of the board. I know there were a lot of questions last time about orientation of the house and just the site in general. I think some of the site questions have been addressed, the orientation issue, I don't think, or Mr. Morse, maybe you want to just address that really quickly? Any changes to the orientation of the house?
To the orientation itself, no. But I want the, I want the board to know, we did give a lot of thought to the orientation of the house when it was originally designed. And the architect might be able to to add further to it, but, you know, we looked at the location at the the back here of the garage. Right now, this site is developed right up essentially to this point. There's an existing shed back there in yard space. We tried to keep the house. Forward on the lot, so it was on the previously developed portions of the property. Look into account consideration that there's ledge that we wanted to avoid at the back of the lot, as well as on the southern side of the lot. We took into account the location of groundwater through test pits that we had conducted as part of the septic system. The septic system being in the front yard. And they also took into account with the orientation, the location of the existing driveway and curb cut. Trying to preserve that, trying to preserve basically as many site features that were out there with the existing house as possible. So that we weren't realigning a curb cut, we weren't altering drainage patterns of the existing septic system or the existing ledge. They also looked at solar impacts on the house, trying to, you know, gain as much. I guess. Eco-friendly solar orientation as well. And like I said, the architect, Mike Bracino, was with us too, if you want to hear more on that aspect of it.
Thanks, Mr. Morse. Why don't we turn over to members of the board first, in case they had questions, we can pose them. With that all but enough, please go ahead, guys. Rita included.
Yeah, if I could, Kevin, I I wanted to thank the applicant for the. Taking to heart the questions that, and the comments that we had raised, and also your very articulate letter, which summarizes your. Your response to that, like the fact that you've moved the driveway. Further from the lot line and moved those trenches towards the south side of the driveway and. I think a lot of those improvements especially will allow us to save those mature canopy trees, which would be very nice. And I think the cultech. Chambers for the drywall chambers are a really good addition. So overall, I think it's a great improvement to the earlier plan, so. I just would wanted to share that. I did want to, whenever it's appropriate, love to hear what the architect has in mind relative to the net zero and the. Sustainable features of the house.
Thanks, Gary. Why don't we just go through any other questions for the applicant or the board? We can certainly get to that. I think that's certainly a point we can certainly like to hear about. Tracy, Rita, Gordon?
I'll echo what Gary said. They, you know, it's. Always appreciated when applicants take the comments from the board. Genuinely and and seriously and are as responsive within the bounds of the project that you want to accomplish. As you have been here, so. That's appreciated. I don't know what, again, it's not our area, but I don't know whether you've applied with the Board of Health yet or not, but I. Will reiterate my skepticism. That the thirty four hundred thousand, thirty four hundred square foot two-bedroom home is, is. I'm not saying you're wrong, Mr. Morse, modest by Hangham standards, I guess is. Is is our present and our future, I suppose, but I I do appreciate the efforts to to be responsive.
Thank you.
Rita, Tracy, please go ahead. I'm sorry to.
Sure. No, I just, I also want to thank you for listening and I like the other trees and everything. I just had a question. It's almost just out of curiosity. I see that you have a guardrail, a tanning wall, and a fence. Why are all three on that, on that side? Especially where the fence is just a small area of fence. I'm just curious.
Sure, so, so off the edge of the pavement on this side, we have a, we have a guardrail that runs along the edge of the driveway. And then there is a retaining wall to help make up the grade at the lot line. The fence that's out there is a existing fence that's actually the neighbor's fence. So that that stays. That's not a fence that we're proposing.
Okay, that's the, that's all. Thank you.
Tracy, anything, anything further to inquire about? Then we can obviously turn to the architect, you have to extend to answer Gary's questions.
Um, no. You know, I I think I had mentioned. The orientation last time, and I knew it had to do with. Solar panels and trying to get those aligned. I don't know if anything's been added to the the plan to, you know. Or I don't even know if it needed to be added to the plan to say why it was oriented that way, but it looks like the. Some trees are being saved, which is good. I was a little concerned with the that heavy dash line before of how much was was being cleared of the site, but. As Mr. Moore said, you know, a lot of the site is remaining untouched, so.
Thank you, Tracy. So with that, Mr. Morse, we'll turn it over to the, you know, the team architect, kind of give us a a brief just conversation about the orientation of the house and the, you know, as Gary kind of called it, kind of the drive to net zero. Understanding that, you know, that that's not particularly part of the plan, quote unquote, in terms of it's, you know, the site plan would be a piece of it.
Sure. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. My name is Michael Rosino. I'm the principal and owner of Amber Architects in Hangham. Just to be respectful of everyone's time, I'll be brief, and if you do have this information, I believe, in your notes as well, but. To be succinct, the orientation is rotated to the south to take advantage of the of the path of the sun. Architects always want to try, in a temperate climate like New England, you want to try to elongate. A a structure to face south to take advantage of that. What it does. You, the shape of the house elongated in east-west direction, that's to minimize the exposure during the warmer summer months, but creating that longer profile facing south. Gives you a southern exposure in the winter months. That allows for a passive heat. It also allows for. If in in our case, we we can take advantage of of the sun for a solar, solar ray. Or solar canopy in the in the rear of the house as well, so. Really trying to face that long edge south is is what the driving force was here, but also. Trying to bend the garage around a little bit, work with the driveway. I I don't want to repeat the things that that Greg has already said, so that that's, that's kind of it.
Thank you, Gary. Any follow-up questions? I mean, again, I understand I want to delve too far down here because you want to open this up to the public.
No, that's, that's fine. I'm I'm satisfied. Appreciate it.
All right. With that, the board's positive comments. Any members of the public that wish to comment on this project tonight? If you do, please just raise your hand or speak up, just eat your name out just for the record. We'd be happy to hear from you. I am scrolling through your list. I don't see anybody. With that, I will take it as nobody would like to comment on the project. So with that, I think the board is prepared to move this forward. So here we have two suggestive findings and a motion that has seven components, and I'll read through those and to colleagues on the board, please interrupt or. Comment as needed. So the proposed findings are as follows, that the proposed development is conditioned by the approval. Will not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the prospective occupants, the occupants of the neighboring properties and users of the adjoining streets or highways, and the welfare of the town generally. And B, the proposed development meets all applicable design and performance standards. And with that, I make the following motion. That we grant the application of Julian Alejandro Rodriguez for site plan approval under section one I of the zoning bylaw. With the waivers, some little requirements under section one I five L related to a site lighting plan and transportation impact analysis. To reconstruct a single-family dwelling with associated landscaping, hardscaping, grading, and drainage to twenty six La Zelle Street in Residence District C, subject to the following conditions, and they are one through seven. One is proof of recording. The applicant should file a certified copy of this decision in the registry of deeds and provide evidence of such recording with the application for a building permit. One is proof of recording. The applicant should file a certified copy of this decision in the registry of deeds and provide evidence of such recording with the application for a building permit. Two is pre-construction meeting, a pre-construction review meeting with inspection of the erosion control installation and mark limits of clearance should be required before issuance of the building permit. Three is limits of work and tree protection areas. During clearing and/or construction activities, the mark limit of work should be maintained until all construction work is completed and the site is cleaned up. All vegetation beyond limit of work should be retained in an undisturbed state and no stockpiling of topsoil or storage of fill materials or equipment may occur within the protected area. Without limiting foregoing, the protected trees to be retained shall be surrounded by temporary protective fencing or other appropriate measures before any clearing or grading occurs, and maintained until all construction work is completed and the site is cleaned up. Protective barriers should be large enough to encompass the critical root zone of all protected trees to be preserved. Inspection of the protective barriers should be required before issuance of the building permit. Four is construction vehicles. All construction vehicles should be parked on site. No construction vehicles shown to the premises before seven AM on any given construction day. Five is inspections. Inspections shall be required during construction and prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy of all elements of the product related to or affecting erosion control, limits of work, and the approved drainage and stormwater system installed for the project. The planning board may require at the applicant's expense the establishment of consultant fee account pursuant to MGL chapter forty-four, section fifty-three G to fund the cost of such inspections. Six is an ASB Plan requirement. Pod project completion and ASB Plan must be submitted to the building commissioner prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, and in no event later than two years after the completion of construction. In addition to such other requirements as are imposed by the building commissioner, the ASB Plan must demonstrate substantial performance with the stormwater system design and performance standards of the approved project plans. And seven is maintenance of protected trees. Each protected tree retained and all new trees planted to mitigate the removal of protected trees shall be maintained in good health for a period of no less than twenty-four months from the date of final inspection or issuance of a certificate of occupancy if applicable. Should such trees be dyed or be removed within such twenty-four month period, the owner of the property should require or place such tree or tree with a tree consistent with the requirements within nine months for the death or removal of such protected tree or new tree. Is there a second for that motion?
Second, Gary.
Thank you, Gary. A quick roll call vote. Tracy?
Hi.
Rita?
Hi.
Gordon?
Hi.
Gary?
Hi.
And I'm as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Best of luck to the applicant.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Absolutely. The next item on the agenda is one hundred Derby Street. This is a parking review and renewal. WS Development filed a request for a review of parking monitor report and renewal of the shared parking model approved August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, under section five A of the zoning bylaw for the Derby Street Shops at one hundred Derby Street Industrial Park in South Hingham overlay, a development overlay districts. Looking around for you, Victoria, I see you there on the call. I'm going to assume you're going to lead the charge here, so please go ahead.
Yeah, happy to. Good evening, everyone. It's great to be back before you. We are returning with, an update to our shared parking. As Kevin mentioned, this was a permit condition that was issued when we had originally permitted the building five redevelopment. A lot has changed since we did that permitting, including the fact that building five in its original proposal was not built, but we did do a redevelopment of that area. For those of you who know Derby Street, that is the old Friday site that has now become Pottery Barn and Shake Shack. When we got permitted for that, and then when we came back before the board to increase some of our site uses, the shared parking requirements carried through those permits. And there was a bit of a sunset or a relook that the board put into the approval that asked us to come back when building five was complete and redo the study that we had originally done. The study was conducted by Andy Hill, who is here on the call. And what we did is we looked at, over a twelve-hour period on both a weekday and a weekend, during the holiday season and during the spring off-season. We flew a drone, counted cars and analyzed the traffic and parking consumption on the site. So now we have the building five original study to review and also the updated study that we have presented to you in Andy's memo. And I had provided a cover memo to that to try to summarize because it's quite lengthy and in-depth. And we're pleased to be back. We think it's working. We think Derby Street Shops is working well. A lot of what we talked with you about during that original permitting process is implemented, working great. We've kept up with it. And so we're hopeful that tonight, after we have a chance to discuss the updated parking study and answer any questions you have, that this might become a permanent part of what we do at Derby Street, how we wanted our parking. Because of the nature of it being a retail center that has tenants coming and going and all demand is not all at once. And that was really the genesis of this discussion was, how do we account for the different uses and the different times of day that they will be generating interest on the property? I'll stop there and if anybody has any questions or would like to hear from Andy, we're happy to discuss.
Victoria, thank you. I think that's a, that's a helpful summary for members of the public, members of the board that were here when we last discussed this, and certainly for new members of the board. Andy, I'll turn it over to you if you have anything to add upfront, or I'm happy for you to kind of go to the board, kind of address any questions or comments, and you can address those in response if that's better for you, easier for you.
I'm, I'm happy to just drop in quickly. Andy Hill with Dustin Design Management, working at the behest of WSM Hingham Properties. The last time I was in front of this board, interestingly, was mid-March of two thousand and twenty. And at that time, we had thoroughly vetted the model that we're using here before the board at that time, as well as Jeff Dirk, who was functioning as the town's peer reviewer here and had made adjustments. So the model itself should not appear to be new in any way, shape or form, because it's been before this board, embedded before this board before. And the methodology applied is the same methodology that we used back in late two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty. So the findings as they stand should be aligned with the board's instructions from that prior iteration. And as, as the analysis shows, even with the changes in use, there's still ample supply available on the site under the highest of conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. So some members of the board were here last time we discussed this, and some are new, creating conversation, you know, what they're asking for is kind of a, you know, an endorsement of the approach that they've been doing for the last, I guess it's been almost, you know, three-ish years. Comments, questions from, from the board in order to kind of help develop the conversation on that?
So I'll, I'll start. And I will start, not, I don't think it's necessary, but with a little bit disclosure that Andy Hill has been providing some, some advice and input to me, you know, my day job. Because parking just seems to follow me wherever I go. It's a topic that is, it's a constant. So I was predisposed to begin with, so I'm certainly aware of his work on, on both sides. So generally speaking, given some of the conversations, Victoria, that we've had with all of you and the parking constraints that you had in the past and the, and the real concerns about, about that. Well, this is good news in the sense that you have more capacity. I, as I've also said here, we care almost as much about your success as you do. What is this telling you relative to the activity at your site?
Thank you for the question. And actually, I'm going to hand that over to Caroline, who's the GM. She's at Derby Street, day in and day out. So I think, Carolyn, do you mind answering that?
Not at all. Thank you for the question, Gordon. It's certainly a good one. I think now more than ever, the landscape has really changed. We have to compete more with online ordering and additional shopping centers along the South Shore. So in order to stay competitive, I think we really have to be strategic to make sure that our customers are loyal. So in terms of parking, I think what has helped us a little bit in terms of congestion and parking, we definitely still see the weekends as our peak traffic, but with people working from home so often and with people not commuting into the city and staying kind of close to home. We definitely see our traffic patterns have changed post-COVID, so we do see our traffic kind of ebb and flow during, during the week, and it's a little just, it's a little bit more spread out. To be honest, things are a little bit more unpredictable, but we're not seeing the same congestion during the same periods that we were pre-COVID. So I hope that helps.
It does, because there's, I mean, I don't know what your vacancy is up there, but there's not a lot, right? I mean, you're, you're, you're pretty.
We're happy to report that there is little to no vacancy at Derby at the moment.
I'm happy to hear it. So, okay, so that's, that's interesting. And then I think it was the same conversation, although we've had so many with you. When you installed a number of the wayfinding signs throughout the site, directing people on how not to get to Route three and, and so on. And, you know, where to, where to cross and all that kind of stuff. I understand the subtlety of the design for your purposes. It took me a while to get used to them, but now, how is, how have you seen that as far as impact on? I know this is not directly related to the parking question, since we have you, to the general flow within the site.
Victoria, I'm happy to take this one too, unless you want to.
No, go for it.
I think the directional wayfinding signage has absolutely helped. We, it's very clear and it's certainly, I think our flow of traffic has, has really improved. And I do, I know, I'm not sure if the board knows, but we do take pretty extraordinary measures during the holiday season to make sure that we have additional support during our busiest times. So we do hire a third party that helps direct traffic, and then we also have someone from Hingham PD available onsite every day during the holiday season, sometimes more than one, to assist with helping to, with traffic flow. And also they have the key to flush the light if we need to get people out quickly.
Great.
I also added the new light onto Derby Street that was created on, at the intersection of Old Derby and Derby has been very helpful. It's another outlet. It's another way for folks who are familiar with the site to come and go.
The one in front of Best River Light, right?
Yeah. Yes. So I think that's also helped disperse the way people are getting into the properties, so there's not as much of a logjam at main entry.
Perfect. Thanks. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you, Gordon. Very helpful. Gary, Tracy, Tracy, Rita, I know, Gary, I think you were obviously here for the last discussion. Tracy, Rita, Rita, I don't think you were, but please go ahead.
No, I was, but I have no questions.
Okay.
I was, I was looking at the conclusions page and, which is very helpful, and I'm comparing, you know, I, anecdotally, my perceptions when I'm at Derby Shops, you know, from the earlier measurement times here, which was, what, nineteen through twenty-two, and then, of course, that was the COVID downturn. And then looking at the recovery from COVID, it seems to me that on a, on a November day, early December day, when it's fairly busy, what I'm reading is that the, the parking usage is about, what, sixty, sixty-five percent of the capacity of the lot? And then during the holiday period, it grows to about seventy, seventy, seventy-five percent. And I'm just wondering, how does that compare to, is there a relationship there between the reduction in parking demand during the peak holiday period that you're mentioning? It's about nineteen percent. Is that fundamentally what the, the reduction might be to, to online shopping?
I think it's really hard to measure.
Yeah, I think echoing what Caroline said, I think we do certainly feel the impact of online shopping. And knowing, you know, Cyber Monday is definitely competing very much with the, the traditional Black Friday these days. But also I think what we have found is that people are shopping at different times. And this year, we modeled an earlier opening for our tenants, rather than, you know, sometimes traditionally people would wait up until midnight. And we were finding that that wasn't generating much interest. But really, people being able to come in and shop at ten AM was more of interest with people working from home and running a quick trend. And so I think what we're finding is that the traffic mid-week is a bit steadier than it ever was, which has also helped lessen kind of the weekend crunch that we once felt.
Yeah, I also felt that during the holiday season that the folks you had assisting in the traffic and the circulation were very helpful because there's a lot of in and out movement, short-term parking, fifteen, twenty minutes, half an hour, something like that. And I, I noticed a difference this holiday season from last relative to that, which I thought was a nice improvement.
Thank you for the feedback. We appreciate it.
Thanks, Gary. Tracy, any questions or comments?
No, I, I've read everything. Seems pretty straightforward.
Perfect, thank you. Victoria, can you just remind me, or maybe, yeah, on this question for you, Andy, how, how do you handle uses that don't appear kind of in our tables that are, are not, that might be unorthodox or something that we just don't account for? And when you're doing your analysis, how they get, they get, you know, they're approached?
Well, I'll start by saying that I think the relatively recent repermitting we, we went through to expand the uses on the property so that we were more aligned with current retail shopping center uses, but also fitting within categories that the Hingham zoning code has, was very, very helpful in sort of aligning our, our businesses with that, that more. But then Andy, I'll let you talk to how you kind of have approached it. We have quite a few categories in the, the parking model in order to try to be able to fit everything in appropriately, but Andy, alternative to you?
Where we found there wasn't a reference within Hingham's zoning code here, we often fell back to empirical studies done by the institution of transportation engineers and the Urban Land Institute, which have gone out and, and studied a wide variety of land uses and actually collected those observations and used those to develop parking demand ratios based on the observation of actual standalone existing land uses. So as a general fallback, that's where we tend to go if we can't find something within code. Because it has its basis in reality and it is, as a general rule, set at a level, an eighty-fifth percentile, which unless anybody wants me to bore them with that, I will not go into greater depth, other than to say that it is a hyper-conservative take on the total, the total pool from which the data was collected to ensure that there is adequate parking to meet the needs of that particular land use under a whole variety of conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. That, that, that is my recollection, just want to make sure I understood it, just because I'm, I'm sure you guys encounter many more uses than we, you know, that we kind of zone for, quote unquote, name it. So it's just interesting to see how do we deal with that, because it comes up for us as well sometimes.
And, Emily, we, we didn't have Jeff look at this, right? Probably because it was showing additional capacity. Is that why, why we didn't, or did we?
Yeah, no, I mean, this exercise was really a matter of counting, so making the observation and then tallying up how many spaces were occupied versus unoccupied.
Yep, okay.
Thanks, Gordon. It's a good question. And, and certainly something we typically have Jeff look at where we have an analysis to be done. With that, it sounds like the board's inclined to move forward. Any questions or comments from members of the public to the board on this? There is, please just state your name and address to the record and go ahead and speak. All right, not seeing or hearing anything. So we have here, you know, you know, a park renewal review involves two pieces, the special permit A three and a site plan review. So I'll go through the special permit A three first, that has a series of findings, A through F, and a suggested motion with three components. And the site plan review finding is a single finding or set of findings with, you know, with, with one motion. So for the special permit A three findings, I'll suggest as follows, A, the parking sufficient in quantity to meet the needs of the proposed project. And we find that as identified in the shared parking model and supplemental parking monitor report, both dated October second, two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and three, parking spaces on site are adequate for the uses of the Derby Street Shops. The busiest, during the busiest hour, which is one PM, or the busiest weekday of the year in December, Derby Street Shops need a total of twelve hundred seventy-seven spaces, leaving seven hundred twenty-six spaces available. On the busiest hour, two PM, or the busiest weekend day of the year, which is in December, Derby Street Shops needs a total of fifteen hundred seventy-three spaces, leaving four hundred and fifty, four hundred thirty spaces available. B is the safe pedestrian access and circulation is provided for. We find that pedestrian access and circulation is unchanged. C is new drivers have been designed and minimized, maximize sightline distances to the greatest extent possible. And we'd find that no changes to entrances or sight distances are proposed. And E and F, there are no findings, but the existing parking areas meet applicable design standards and the granting of the special permit is consistent with the intent of the bylaw and will not increase the likelihood of accident or impair. or impair access and circulation. So with those findings, I make the following motion that we grant the application of WS Development for review of the parking monitor report and renewal of special permit A three and shared parking model approved August thirteenth, two thousand twenty, under section five A of the zoning bylaw for the Derby Street shops at one hundred Derby Street and Industrial Park and Southend and Development Overlay Districts, subject to the following conditions. And they are one through three. One is proof of recording. The applicant shall be filed a certified copy of this decision in the registry of deeds and provide evidence as such according to the community planning department. Two is a parking table. The applicant shall continue to monitor parking onsite and provide an updated parking table of the community planning department as sentence change over time. And three is all ongoing conditions of the special permit A three issued August thirteenth, two thousand twenty shall remain in full force and effect, unless otherwise modified by that permit, by this permit. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Gordon. Quick roll call vote, then we'll go to the site plan review. Gary?
Hi.
Rita?
Hi.
Tracy?
Hi.
Gordon?
Hi.
And I'm as well. And on the site plan review, I propose the following findings, that the parking review does not materially adversely affect conditions governed by its site plan review design and performance standard set forth in section one I of the zoning bylaw. And as such, the product constitutes a minor modification to site plan approval. And with that, I make the following motion that we waive site plan review under section one I nine of the bylaw in connection with a parking review and renewal for the Derby Street shops at one hundred Derby Street and Industrial Park and Southend and Development Overlay Districts. Is there a second for that motion?
Second, Gary.
Thank you, Gary. Roll call vote, Tracy?
Hi.
Rita? Gordon?
Hi.
Gary?
Hi.
And I'm as well. Victoria, Andy, Caroline, thank you very much. Best of luck.
Best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Really good to see you again. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Ten Builo Road. This is a site plan review and Salvatore and Rose Resepha filed an application for site plan review under section one I of the zoning bylaw to construct an addition, landscape and hardscape at Ten Builo Road and Residence District A. And with that, I'll turn it over to the applicant team.
Yes, this is Greg Morris from Morris Engineering.
Welcome back, Mr. Morris. Look at.
Thank you. I'm going to put a copy of the site plan up on the screen here and do a share screen. Excellent. You can see that? Great.
Yeah, sorry. Yep.
Great. Thank you. For the record, my name's Gregory Morse. I'm a registered engineer with Morse Engineering. I'm representing the property owner and applicant Salvatore and Rose Resepha. We filed a site plan review for additions on a single-family home located at Ten Builo Road. Looking at the plan here, Builo Road is at the bottom of the page. The property line is the black bold line. The lot itself is about a third of an acre in size. It's fifteen thousand square feet. It's entirely upland land area. There are no wetlands on the site or within proximity to it. It's in the Residence A zoning district. It's developed with an existing single-family home located right here. Around that home, you have access on an existing asphalt driveway on the front. The remainder of the lot is essentially lawn area. This represents the edge of the existing tree line here. So you'll see that there's, you know, extensive lawn around the existing home, as well as a shed in the backyard right now. Serviced by municipal sewer and water service. Topography generally slopes from the back of the lot toward the front, slopes down to Builo Road being the low point. What puts us here is the fact that while the limit of disturbance with this project is only forty-six hundred square feet, the entire lot is essentially a slope that's greater than ten percent. So that's what triggers the site plan review. The proposal here is to construct three additions off of this house. The first one would be on the front of the house. This is a porch across the front with a new walkway and retaining wall down to the existing driveway. Off the right side of the house, this would be an addition that comes out the side and extends out into the backyard. This is a two-story addition, which accommodates on the front of the house, a new garage for the house, as well as living space on that second level in the back portion of that addition. In off the back of the house, elevated would be a second story. So the second floor of this house would be elevated in the air with finished space. But underneath that finished space on the back would be a porch in a deck extending out into the backyard. There's absolutely no removal of any vegetation associated with this site as far as trees. The trees along the side lot line, the tree line along the back, and the trees along the right side lot line are all to remain. So all of the work is over areas that is previously lawn or existing asphalt driveway areas. For stormwater, we essentially proposed two different stormwater devices along the back of the work right here. We have a crushed stone driveway, a crushed stone trench. That crushed stone trench would be attached to the roof leaders and the roof drainage system off the back of the house. So we have a series of pipes that run out and discharge into that crushed stone trench. And then at the front of the site, along the edge of the existing driveway, as well as along the entire frontage of the lot, we're proposing a crushed stone trench as well. Again, just to promote infiltration of any surface water that's coming down off of this slope onto Builo Road. Builo Road at this location in this lot all discharge into one catch basin that's at the front left corner of this lot. We've proposed a silt sock around that catch basin during the construction period. As well as we provided a full set of drainage calculations for your peer review consultant, Pat Brennan, on this project. I'm going to flip to the second page of our submittal, which was the landscape plan. You'll see the landscaping for this project is proposed along the front, primarily in the left side of the house, significant shrub plantings, as well as one or two ornamental trees being proposed. Again, the vegetation down the sides is existing vegetation, and that would all remain in place. So there'll be new plantings along the front, as well as a new walkway from the existing driveway up to that new front porch area. We had also submitted a full set of architectural plans. The top picture here being a rendering of the front of the house as it sits today. You know, with the existing asphalt driveway. And there is an existing stairwell up to the elevated first floor of this house. The bottom here depicts what the proposed plans have. Keeping the asphalt driveway, but converting with that new addition into a garage on this lower level, a set of stairs up to the new porch on the front of the house, in a complete rehab of the remainder of the house. Going back to our site plan, there were two waivers that we submitted a request for. As part of this, the two waivers were with respect to the width of the driveway. The driveway as it sits today is twenty-one feet wide on the lot. But out here at the street, the curb cut on Builo Road is twenty-five feet. Your regulations require driveways to be twenty-four feet or less. We were not proposing to change that driveway curb cut in any way, shape or form. We were hopeful the board could give us the waiver to keep the driveway as it exists today at twenty-five feet versus twenty-four. The second one with, is with respect to the electrical service to this house. There's a utility pole at the front right corner of this lot. The existing house is serviced by an overhead electric right here. The proposal would be to keep that overhead electric and tie it into the house at the new front right corner of the house, rather than go subsurface, which is what your regulations require. I'm going to turn it over to you. Again, you did have Pat Brennan review this on behalf of the board. I believe Pat's letter and our revised plans that we had submitted addressed his outstanding comments, but I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Morse. Pat, I thought I saw you briefly on the call. I think you're still here. Anything you want to draw the board's attention to? You know, our standard seems relatively straightforward, but please go ahead.
Thank you, Kevin. No, as Greg mentioned, they addressed all the concerns that I had in my original review letter on, on the revised plans. And, you know, when they submitted those revised plans, the only thing that was missing at the time was a revised landscape plan, and they submitted that that day, and that took care of my last comment, which basically just, I was just making sure that the crushed stone trench detail shown on the site plan matches up with what's specified landscape plan. They did that. So they did address everything that I had.
Thank you very much, Pat. Much appreciated. Members of the board, any questions or comments to the applicant?
I just had one, Kevin.
Please go ahead, Gary.
I like the plan. I like the driveway. I like what you're doing. What I was, one question is on the right-hand side of the plane with the retaining wall. The high point of the grade is very close to the next lot line. And is the water basically, and it's low as you, where you're at the house? Is the water, how is that being kept away from the neighbors' property lines? Does it just infiltrate into that trench over there on the right side of the lot? See the, the, it's right close to the lot line there?
Right, right.
Yeah, that whole area. Is that, is that all sloping towards the wall and being picked up below?
It's all, it's all sloping toward Builo Road. And as you actually come down to the face of the house, the grade from the lot line slopes toward the driveway.
I see. Okay.
And along the edge of the driveway here, we have an additional crushed stone trench. So any water coming over land at that location is in that crushed stone trench.
Okay. All right. That makes sense. Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Gordon, Rita, Tracy?
Don't look, the, looks like a good plan, well explained.
Yes.
So no, no questions for me.
Thank you, Gordon. Tracy?
No, I'm good.
Perfect. Thank you. And Rita?
I'm, I'm good. Looks really nice, actually.
Thank you. Mr. Morse, thank you. I, I concur with Gordon. Really well explained and aligned very well. With that, I'll turn it over to members of the public. If they have any questions or comments, please just go ahead, state your name and address to the record. All right. Seeing and hearing none, we'll go through our review process. And you've heard earlier, we have two findings and a series of a motion with seven subsections. So the two findings here is followed is that the proposed development is conditioned by the approval will not adversely affect the health, safety and welfare of the prospective occupants, the occupants of neighboring properties, and use of these joining streets or highways, and the welfare of the town generally. And B is that the proposed development meets all applicable design and performance standards with the exception of standards under section one I six H, requiring underground electrical communication connection and one I six I I C to allow an existing driveway opening at twenty-five feet in width, where limitation is twenty-four feet. A way where the standards to allow an overhead connection and twenty-five foot wide driveway opening will not adversely impact impact the interests set forth in subsection A above. So with that, I'd make the following motion that we grant the application of Salvatore and Rose Resepha for site plan approval under section one I of the zoning bylaw to construct an addition, landscape and hardscape at Ten Builo Road and Residence District A, subject to the following conditions, one through seven. And there is follows, one, proof of recording. The applicant shall file a certified copy of this decision in the registry of deeds and provide evidence such recording with the application for a building permit. Two is a pre-construction meeting, a pre-construction review meeting with inspection of the erosion control installation and mark limit to clearing shall be required before issuance of a building permit. Three is limits of work and tree protection areas. During clearing and our construction activities, the mark limit of work shall be maintained for all construction work is completed and the site is cleaned up. All vegetation beyond the limit of work shall be retained in an undisturbed state. No stockpiling of topsoil or storage of fill materials or equipment may occur within the protected area. Without limiting the foregoing, protected trees retained shall be surrounded by temporary protective fencing or other appropriate measures before any clearing or grading occurs, and maintained until all construction work is completed and the site is cleaned up. Protected barriers shall be large enough to accomplish equitable root zone of all protected trees to be reserved. Inspection of the protected barrier shall be required before issuance of a building permit. Four is construction vehicles. All construction vehicles shall be parked on site. No construction vehicles unto the premises before seven AM on any given construction day. Five is inspections. Inspections shall be required during construction and prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy of all elements of the product related to or affecting erosion control, limits of work, and the approved drainage and stormwater system installed for the project. Planning board may require at the applicant's expense the establishment of an consulting fee account pursuant to Mass Gen laws, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three G, to fund the cost of such inspections. Six is an as-built plan requirement. Upon project completion, an as-built plan must be submitted to the building commissioner prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. And in no event later in the two years after the completion of construction. In addition to such other requirements as are imposed by the building commissioner, the as-built plan must demonstrate substantial performance with the stormwater system design and performance standards of the approved project plans. And seven is maintenance of protected trees. Each protected tree retained shall be maintained in good health for a period of no less than twenty-four months from the date of final inspection or to get a occupancy if applicable. Should such tree die or be removed within such twenty-four month period, the owner of the property should be required to replace such tree with a tree consistent with the requirements than nine months from the death or removal of such protected tree. Is there a second for that motion?
Second, Gary.
Thank you, Gary. Roll call vote, Tracy? Hi. Rita?
Hi.
Gordon?
Hi.
Gary?
Hi.
And I'm as well. Mr. Morse, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Good luck.
Thanks so much, everyone.
Thank you. Our pleasure. The next item on the agenda is Thirty-three Independence Lane. This is also a site plan review. Goose Holding LLC filed an application for site plan review under section one I of the zoning bylaw to reconstruct a single-family dwelling with associated landscaping, hardscaping, grading and drainage at Thirty-three Independence Lane and Residence District B. So with that, I will turn it over to the applicant team to present on this.
Hi, yeah. Good afternoon. My name is Gabriel Padilla. I am an engineer with Grady Consulting, and I'm here with Mr. Matt Mermes. So we are proposing to raise or rebuild building over at Thirty-three Independence Lane. It's a single-family residence. We are proposing to extend the house, but we are actually increasing the setbacks. Right now, the the building itself is non-conforming due to setbacks. Right now, the setback is at seven feet. That's where the existing dwelling is, and we're bringing back to eight, pretty much eight feet and four inches from the property line. We are also proposing a septic system. It's going to be a pump system with geomap. And we're also proposing a stormwater system that will mitigate the offset of the additional impervious area due to the construction. We are also proposing, we also showing the erosion, erosion control. We have a construction entrance here. We have silt sock all around the work area. So this line also serves as the work area, the area of disturbance. We are proposing to build a swale on both sides, which will bring the runoff into sand filters, which will then be infiltrated using concrete galleys. We also have a landscaping plan, which I will share here. Everyone can see the landscaping plan?
No, I think we still see the initial site plan.
All right, let me do it this way. There we go. So we are proposing the removal of these two maples and a cedar tree. And we have replacement trees. It's going to be Western Arvites, seven to eight feet in height. That would be these ones. The plan was developed by Mr. Sean Papish. And here you can also see the tree protection that we have for all trees during the construction phase. And if there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Really quickly, while I have this up, why are we removing those two maples? They don't seem to be kind of in the construction area and aren't kind of directly tied to the septic system.
Uh, okay, sorry. I would have to defer that to Mr. Mermes on that one. I do believe it's because of, they're too close to the wall here. But I'm not a hundred percent sure on that.
Yeah, they are. Could you hear me?
Best we can, Mr. Mermes.
Yeah, so we're planning on taking those two trees down, because they are close there, close to the, the patio in the back. And we're also trying to create a little bit of a yard, because there's not much of a yard back there.
You know, if those trees are Norway maples or? You know if those trees are, um, Norway maples or whether they're sugar maples?
Um, I have no idea.
What are they?
Sugar.
Uh, the, the, the one on the left is a sugar maple. The one on the right is a Norway maple and they're both in terrible shape. They've both lost significant branches over the last few years. In fact, one of them's still lying in the backyard. I hope that was appropriate.
No, thank you.
Yeah, no, it's good to know what the condition is.
Uh, without, um, how are you still on the call here? You can kind of walk us through kind of your assessment of the project, uh, maybe kind of, um, expand a bit on the stormwater system design here.
Yep, I'm still here, Kevin. Um, yeah, so I, I reviewed the initial plan that, um, Gabriel had submitted. Had some comments, about nine comments. They submitted the revised plans. Um, and addressed my comments. The, one of my original comments was, uh. Asking them to consider piping the roof runoff, um, the downspouts directly into their chamber system. Um, because basically what they're doing with the stormwater here is they're capturing overland flow. They have, excuse me, a trench drain in the driveway. That discharges to a sand filter. The sand filter also intercepts overland flow. And then from the sand filter and that, the sand filter cleans the stormwater. And from the sand filter, it discharges to that subsurface, um, concrete chamber system for infiltration. Um, so the, the stormwater, uh, works the way that they have it designed. Um, and, you know, I, they, they, they addressed my comments to my satisfaction and their calculations show that. Um, they're in compliance with your regulations in the stormwater regulations. So, uh, I'm comfortable with what they've proposed here.
Thank you, Pat. With that, uh, we'll, we'll go to the board kind of for the initial comments and questions. Obviously, first time we're seeing this project.
Just a general question when I, this is the first time I've seen an application where we're actually putting as part of a structure in the tree yard. And I don't know if there's any, um, I know that the, it's pre-existing, I guess, non-conforming, um. To what the, when was this house built? Nineteen fifty, I guess, to what the zoning was in Liberty Pole in nineteen fifty. Um, I'm just curious, is there anything in our, in our bylaw relative to building in the tree yard? Just as a general question because it's the first time it's come up.
Uh, Kevin, I have to answer that. Um, there is, I simply put, Gary, no, there's not. Um, there, they show the tree protection, um, for any protected trees that are there, but, um, the only requirement is that. Um, they just, any trees removed that are six inches or greater within the tree yard be mitigated. But there's nothing regarding structures.
Okay. Alrighty, I don't have any further questions.
Thank you, Gary. Tracy, Rita, Gordon? Not sure this.
I'm good.
Yeah, I don't have anything.
Thanks, and Rita? I'll take that as a no. I think that's a nutsing, Kevin. Um. I don't have anything either. Any members of the public wish to comment on this project? If so, please just, um, state your name and address for the record and we'd be happy to hear from you.
Uh, yes, uh, how, how much is the square footage of the property of the dwelling?
Do you just mind, um, just to state your name and address for the record, please?
I'd say you need, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Mark Railton, I'm, uh, thirty one Independence Lane. Uh, right, right next to the, uh, the house. It's, it's a single story house. And from what I can gather from the, uh, plot lines. The actual footprint of the house is not increasing. Is, is that accurate?
It's a two-story house.
Not now, it isn't.
Um, no. Uh, actually, it does have a second floor, I believe.
No, no, I've been living here for thirty years and.
Okay, I, 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 again. If you've been in the house, it's, you don't want to spend a lot of time in there, so.
No, I, 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 I know the house well.
Yeah, so.
So the, 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 uh, outline of the house is going to remain the same. The extra square footage. I'd be interested to know what the extra is, but the extra square footage is going vertically.
Pretty much, yes.
And, and how much is that? How much is the square footage increase?
Square footage of the house is, uh, just under thirty-five hundred square feet.
And what is it now?
Uh, roughly about half of that.
So it's doubling in size?
Correct.
Well, actually more than doubling in size. And, but it, it's not getting any closer to, uh, actually you're getting further away from the other house. And maintaining the fifteen foot, uh, distance from my property line.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any members of the public wish to come into the project? I'm not seeing any. Alright, with that, we'll go through our, um, site plan review process again, uh, since we've heard a few times tonight. Uh, the two findings and a suggested motion that has subcomponents. Um, here there are seven subcomponents as well. So the findings are as follows. The proposed development is conditioned by the approval will not adversely affect the health, safety and welfare of the prospective occupants, the occupants of neighboring properties. And the users of the adjoining streets or highways and the welfare of the town generally. And the second finding is the proposed development meets all applicable design and performance standards. With that, I'd make the following motion that we grant the application to Goose Holdings LLC for site plan approval under section one I of the zoning bylaw. To reconstruct the single family dwelling with associated landscaping, hardscaping, grading and drainage at thirty three Independence Lane and Residence District B, subject to the following conditions. One through seven. One, proof of recording. The applicant shall file a certified copy of this decision in the registry of deeds. And provide evidence such recording with the application for a building permit. Two is a pre-construction meeting. A pre-construction review meeting with inspection of erosion control installation and mark limit to clearing shall be required before issuance of the building permit. Three is limits of work tree protection areas. During clearing and our construction activities, the mark limit of work shall be maintained until all construction work is completed and the site is cleaned up. All vegetation beyond the limit of work should be retained in an undisturbed state, no stockpiling of topsoil or storage of fill materials or equipment. May occur within the protected area. Without limiting the foregoing, protected trees to retain shall be surrounded by temporary protective fencing or other appropriate measures. Before any clearing or grading occurs and maintained until all construction work is completed and the site is cleaned up. Protected barriers shall be large enough to encompass the critical root zone of all protected trees to be reserved. Inspection of the protected barriers shall be required before issuance of a building permit. Four is construction vehicles. All construction vehicles shall be parked on site, no construction vehicles unto the premises before seven AM on any given construction day. Five is inspections. Inspections shall be required during construction and prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy of all elements of the product related to or affecting erosion control. Limits of work and the approved drainage and stormwater system installed for the project. The planning board may require at the applicant's expense the establishment of a consultant fee account pursuant to mass gen laws, chapter forty four. Section fifty three G to fund the cost of such inspections. Six is an as-built plan requirement. Upon project completion, an as-built plan must be submitted to the building commissioner prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy. And in no event later than the two years after the completion of construction. In addition to such other requirements as are imposed by the building commissioner, the as-built plan must demonstrate substantial performance with the stormwater system design. And performance standards of the approved project plans. And seven is maintenance of protected trees. Each protected tree retained and all new trees planted and mitigate removal of protected trees. Shall be maintained in good health for a period of no less than twenty four months from the date of the final inspection. Or issuance of certificate of occupancy if applicable. Should such trees die or be removed within such twenty four month period, the owner of the property shall be required to replace such tree with a tree consistent with the requirements. Within nine months from the death or removal of such protected tree or new tree. Is there a second for that motion?
Second, Gary.
Thank you, Gary. Roll call vote, uh, Gordon Carr?
Hi.
Tracy Schreiber?
Hi.
Rita Silva?
Hi.
And Gary Tondorck?
Hi.
And I'm as well. Thank you very much, the applicant team, and best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. The next item on our agenda is one ninety-nine and two-one Ward Street. This is a definitive FRD with a common driveway and site plan review. Uh, Blackrock Development filed applications for modification of a special permit eight three in site plan approval originally issued September eighteen, two thousand twenty-three. Under sections four D and, uh, one I of the zoning bylaw and a special permit eight three under section, uh, five I of the zoning bylaw. For definite plan review of a flexible residential development consisting of three single family dwellings. And a common driveway and four point eight acres of land at one ninety-nine, two-one Ward Street in Residence District. I think we saw the preliminary for this earlier. This is the first kind of open hearing on this, the actual application. So with that, Mr. Sullivan, I think you lead the charge here. Please go ahead.
Yes, uh, thank you. Uh, for the record, Brendan Sullivan with Merrill Associates. Um, here with the applicant and owners, uh, John and George, uh, Mcoldrick. Um, if I could just share the screen and I'll pull up the plan set. Um, so as you said, this is a, um, follow-up to the, um, uh, preliminary approval for the, uh. Uh, three lot flexible residential design, uh, as numbered ninety-nine, one ninety-nine and two oh-one, uh, Ward Street. Um, I'll just go over the existing conditions again briefly. The, uh, there is an existing dwelling on the, on the lot. Um, on the south side of the lot, um, there's the Plymouth River, which there's a riverfront area, wetlands associated with that. We have associated buffers with that that come into the lot. Um, the total lot area is approximately four point eight acres. Uh, we did do some test pits, um. Where the proposed houses are going and as well as for the septic, uh, down, down adjacent to, uh, Ward Street. Um, we came up with the, um, the, uh, conceptual plan, um, to. Do the conceptual plan for our three lots, the three, the proposed lots. Um, and then this is the subdivision plan. Um, you know, a real difference from this plan from the, uh, original preliminary is that we did add, uh, twenty foot open space area as requested. Along the westerly and northerly boundery of the properties. Um, this basically just, um. Took a little bit of lot area away from the lots, uh, but does provide a buffer, um, along the exterior boundaries of the property. Um, so this is the, basically the layout and grading plan, um. Kind of busy as is, but, um, does show the, uh, lot one, uh, lot two and lot three. Uh, three new, uh, four bedroom, uh, dwellings. Um, each serviced by a driveway, um, and that goes into a common driveway, uh, so it'd be one access out to Ward Street. Uh, the common driveway is just over about a hundred feet long. Um, stormwater is mitigated, uh, from, um, infiltrating the roof runoff. Uh, from two infiltration systems up top, so, uh, lot one, um. Uh, dwelling in lot two will go into infiltration system number three, um, a larger system, uh, underground infiltrators. Roof leaders will be tied into them. Um, lot number three has its own, um, infiltration system just to the, uh, east of that. Um, and then the proposed roadway, um, is being captured by an infiltration system down adjacent to the. Adjacent to the roadway, um, and has an outlet heading towards, uh, Ward Street. As I said, there's a, there is a common septic field, uh, that all three dwellings will be serviced by, uh, for the septic system. Um, and we did get some staff comments. We responded to those. And, um, I know it's all for peer review for, uh, Mr. Brennan to take a look at. Um, I think that's really about it. We did, and then the other, only other comment I did was, um, wanted to mention was that a lot one. Um, the house was moved, um, to the south, uh, away from that lot line, um, as requested. Um, we, we neglected to, we did not move the other dwellings. Uh, we were trying to, I know there was a comment about trying to spread them apart a little bit, but. Um, just because of the ledge on site and the grading, there's already, uh, a good amount of cut. Um, the grade coming up around where the houses are going. Um, so we're try, we're trying to keep the houses fairly close together. Um, the idea is for, um, you know, um, family members to own all three dwellings at this point, so. Um, you know, hopefully, I don't know how the McOldricks are, but I think they all get along, so. Um, but, uh, but that was for the reasoning for keeping the house layouts, uh, the way they were. Um, open up to any, uh, questions or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Much appreciated. Um, Pat, I see on the call, I, we don't see a letter from you, obviously. Mr. Sullivan said this is kind of out for review. I just, um. Anything you want to draw the board's attention to, not having looked at the product, you know, in-depth, not holding anything, but just that we want to focus on ourselves?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I have been reviewing it. I, I was gonna, I was waiting till after this initial hearing to submit a letter. Um, but one, one thing that I did notice. Um, they have, uh, the access and utility easement that all the utilities. And, and obviously the, the common driveway is within. However, there are utilities on, like the septic tank for lot one. Um, actually crosses over the property line. It's not within that easement. Also, their water and electric services are not within the easement. And then the same, excuse me, the same thing for lot three, their water and electric services are not in that easement. Um, and then I guess my question would be, they have the three subsurface infiltration systems. And I believe those would probably be required to be within easements as well. So I think they need to adjust the easements a bit to make sure that they. Encompass all of the proposed utilities that cross lot lines and so forth.
Thanks, Pat. That's helpful. And obviously easily correctable by the applicant.
Yes, yeah. And, and I, you know, and I'll have other comments.
Um, sure.
You know, I went through it. The stormwater looks, looks good at this point. You know, some minor comments that I will include in the letter, but nothing, nothing that jumps out at me at this point. The easement thing was the, the big thing that I saw right now.
Thank you, Pat. It's very helpful. I appreciate it. Members of the board, um, is the first hearing on this. I don't think we're expecting, I mean, I'm certainly not expecting a vote on this tonight, so, um, the plan would be to continue it. So really just looking kind of, uh, I think for comments for the applicant, although we have gone through this process once, it made some changes, so welcome them.
Uh, Kevin, just a couple of comments. I was just going through the plans. Um, I noticed on the conventional yield plan, and we didn't pick this up earlier, but. The square is a high, should be a hundred and twenty feet. Isn't it eighty percent of the frontage? So eighty percent of a hundred fifty feet is a hundred and twenty? They're listed as a hundred. I think they should be a hundred and twenty. Because this is, uh, Residence District C.
Uh, yes, that is correct. That square should be a hundred and twenty. I can, I can make that adjustment.
Okay, great. Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Uh, the other question I had, just, just, uh, just looking at the plans, I see the square footage is plus or minus. And I'm just wondering, when this goes to like building permits and stuff, I don't. Do they, do they approve plus or minus? Is there any way they just can't be exact? Square footages?
Um, they can be. I mean, typically, um. Um, the only reason why they're really plus or minus for the, uh, for the open space lot is that it is, you know, it's, the border is a river. Um, so it goes to the threat of the river, which can be, you know.
Got it. Yeah, okay.
Uh, but as far as the lots go, they, they, they should be the lot one, two and three, that they're pretty defined, so.
Yeah, yeah, I just thought that when it goes to building permit, I think he'll probably want them defined.
Sure.
Okay, uh, and then, um, in terms of the, uh, on the FRD plan, the, um. Just the length of the driveways to the garages and things, we've had a number of questions on other FRDs where the length of the driveway is. Sufficient to, to accommodate a car and its full, full depth without. Um, I'm thinking of the center house. The side houses seem fine, but the center house seems pretty close. I don't know. It's just a question.
Um, the driveway length, what, as far as the, the, the two lane pulling out?
Yeah, yeah, just in terms of the overhang, is, is enough for, it is designed for what, two cars side by side and then they?
Yes, about, yeah, two cars side by side and, and this distance here is, I usually make it at least, uh, thirty, maybe even as much as forty feet.
Okay.
So there's enough room there for two, two cars to stack pole in there.
And this, there's, uh, there's no, um, I'm just thinking with, uh, if children are in here, any, uh, anywhere to walk along the roadway? Uh, or, you know, wait for the school bus down by Ward Street. It's a fairly busy, uh, high-traffic street.
Um, so we, we do have the, the, the roadway width, um, and we do have, you know, the, the gravel shoulders. And there is a little bit of room on the outside of the shoulders. Um, I mean, there's only three dwellings here, so we're not looking for a lot of traffic. Um.
Yeah, I was thinking more Ward Street because that's a pretty high tri, high, high-speed zone in there.
Yeah, um, so what? So something like a, like maybe a bus stop or something down on Ward?
I was thinking like a bench or a bus stop or someplace where they could gather, um, you know, while they're waiting for the bus.
Yeah, I mean, the, the area, um, to the north of the driveway is fairly wooded. Um, the area to the south where the septic system's going, I mean, that will be, you know, this will all be obviously, you know, constructed in a fairly level area that will be all, almost lawn. Um, and it will be tiered down a little bit and most, there's not, there isn't a lot of large trees along Ward Street in this area, so there is, there's a lot of area to, to, um. You know, uh, wait for the bus stop there. It's, it's not like the trees are up against the edge of the roadway.
Yeah, okay. Alright. That's all I had.
Um, while we're talking about that area, kind of the tip of the driveway, what is the, um, what, what's the grading on the landing there? I know we've looked at this in a couple other projects. We're just making sure we kind of come flush, you know, how we come flush to the street. I drove by the other day and it's hard to tell what it looks like exactly when the driveway will wind.
Yeah, so the the driveway, the maximum grade in the driveway is ten percent. That's what the fire department, fire department requested maximum. And coming off of the edge of the, coming off of the edge of the road, it does, it comes up at probably like a, like a six or seven percent before we get into the ten percent, the ten percent starts probably about twenty five, thirty feet back from the edge of pavement. If that's what the question was.
Yeah, that is, and then i- is it appropriate to add like a bit of a landing area there then for kind of a school bus stop, that's kind of off the driveway, it's a little flatter without the grading?
You mean like off to the side or something?
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
Yeah, we could let maybe do like a gravel shoulder or something. You know, or 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 pavement as well. We're just trying to reduce the the overall footprint of the impervious up there.
Okay. Got likes on the board, any other questions, comments?
It's pretty consistent with the preliminary, right, there were, you know, the changes are maybe the most substantive change is actually moving that lot three. Or I'm sorry, the lot one house further away from that property line, right, so. You know, further south, which is which is good, so no, I just will wait for for Pat's feedback and for other staff review, but no questions now.
Thanks, Gordon.
And I know we talked about it before and sorry, I don't remember, but I know there's a lot of ledge and a lot of rock. Will there be blasting because are you going to be keeping a lot of that rock that's already in front of you as you drive by because you can clearly see it as you drive by?
Yeah, so the, the, yeah, that that rock or crop you're talking about is this, is this part here? Up in the the northeast corner of the lot that adjacent to the street, we are keeping most of that intact. We did move the before on the preliminary, I think we had it, we had the grading cropping a piece of it over here. And this is just exposed ledge, I'm sure once we've, in some of the test pits, we did hit ledge fairly shallow in some areas, so and probably for the construction of the houses as well for the basements. You know, there will be some ledge removal. This, this big outcrop, we are going to mostly keep intact, we're not planning on removing any of the vegetation or or any of that rock removal, any of that exposed ledge as it is. We probably, depending on how much ledge we run into for the foundations, it's probably ma, does make it easier to to blast. Just because that's, that's an easier removal as opposed to if you're in there with a chipper hammer, you know, you could be chipping for months at a time where a blast is, you know, a fairly more efficient way to remove the ledge.
Now, and a lot of that woods, I see, I'm thinking about, I'm hearing everybody talking about a bus stop and you know, I know it's three houses, but you don't know how many kids are going to be there. I feel that area is very woodsy because I drive by there all the time. So what if there's some type of like a, like a platform or something that maybe kids can stand or I I just feel it's very woodsy over there, it is a very busy street.
Yeah, it is, but like I said, if you do drive, drive by there in the area in front of the septic system. I mean, we, when we did perk tests, we easily pulled our car off the road here quite a ways before we were near the tree line and we were well off the edge of the roadway. Now, that's a different story if you, if you're up in this area on the northern part of the driveway, but the southern part. There's the, you know, there's, there's ample place to to pull a car off. And also, as you, if you, you know, the septic system is going to be a a large area of just lawn area.
All cleared, okay.
And that will be all cleared and you can't plant or build anything on top of that, so that would be a larger area up there.
Okay, and I just wanted, Michael, will Jeff Dirk be looking at this for visual or?
We haven't requested a review from him. This, this isn't a roadway, it's a common driveway, so if, if it were a roadway, we'd be talking about something a little bit different because there are different design standards. But where it's just a common driveway, we don't typically have him review those.
Right. Thank you.
Thanks, Rita. Tracy, see anything on your end?
No.
Thank you. Any members of the public on the call wish to comment on the project or any questions for the planning board? If so, please just go ahead and state your name and answer the record. Happy to hear from you. All right, I am not seeing any. So with that, I'm going to continue this project, we make a motion to continue the application of lock rock development for modification of a special permanent A three inside plan approval originally issued September eighteen, two thousand twenty three, under sections four D and I have a zoning by law on a special permanent A three under section five, I have a zoning by law for definitive plan review of a flexizable residential development consisting of three single family dwellings and a common driveway and four point eight acres of land at one ninety nine two one Ward Street in Residence District C to the February fifth, two thousand twenty four meeting of the planning board at seven P M. Thank you, Gordon, we'll hold vote, Tracy?
I.
Rita? Gary?
Hi.
Gordon?
Hi.
And I'm as well, thank you very much, well done and appreciate the response and the original review.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, with that, we turn to the zoning article section of our agenda. To discuss before, there are quite a few zoning articles, so here, we'll take a look through them, Emily, Michael, I'll turn this over to you. For member of the public that are on the call, we're happy to hear from you, this will not be the only time we talk about. Perhaps all these or at the very least, most all of them, so we welcome your comments, but this certainly will not be the only time for comment and input and feedback. So with that, Emily, Michael, please go ahead, or I'm happy to kind of open each of them in turn if you want.
Sure, yeah, actually, if you want to open all articles, Kevin, that would be helpful and then we will be going through them one by one. So I'll, I'll get into more of the details about the legal out of for each.
Perfect, thank you, Emily, so I'm going to open for the hearing, the zoning articles A through K. A being updated to nursing home use, B being brew pub, brewery, wine or distillery, C being updated floodplain map references and regulations. D being groundwater protection overlay district. E being maximum height in the harbor overlay district, F being abandonment or discontinuance of non-conforming conditions, G being the MBTA communities multi-family housing. H being special requirements in the official and open space district. I being electrical legal charging parking requirements, J being signage reference correction and K being personal wireless service facilities.
Thank you, and the order in which you just read through those, Kevin. They are sequential based on what section of the existing bylaw or proposed bylaw the particular amendment would affect and lettered right now A through K. The presentation, I apologize if this ends up being confusing, we're trying to group similarly initiated articles together. So the first category we're going to go through are state mandated changes, changes that were required to adopt in order to remain in compliance with certain state regulations. The next group, which happens to be the largest group, are really changes intended to address locally identified needs or initiatives. And then finally, we have a couple of what we tend to call cleanup articles, they're, they're really just corrections of typos and and those types of amendments. I'm going to do a summary level review of each article and then I'm, I'm happy to take board questions or questions from the public, Kevin, if you feel that's appropriate. As you mentioned at the outset, we're not necessarily going to get through most certainly, potentially any of the articles this evening, so there's plenty of time to provide comments. But your, you know, questions, initial reactions are helpful for us to prepare for future hearings. And then we could potentially vote on a couple, maybe the cleanup articles. For the others, we'll discuss schedule for the continued public hearings. So our first article, and again, this is in that that initial category of state mandated amendments. This is actually federally and state mandated. But the intent of the update to flood, the floodplain map and regulations article is one, to revise or adopt the the map, the new map references issued by FEMA for the Charles watershed. Back in February, they issued or reissued rather preliminary flood insurance rate maps or firms. Actually, just this past week, on January third, the FEMA issued a letter of final determination on those. And so we are now required to adopt those maps within a six month period, so our only opportunity to do so will be at the upcoming annual town meeting. There are eleven different panels that were, are in the Charles watershed and are being amended, so so those are the panels that that we'll be looking at in that first portion of the bylaw amendment. The second, since we were already in section three C of the bylaw, we're kind of restructuring those regulations to be more similar to other overlay districts or special regulations. So the bylaw would be organized to start out with the purpose, next it will identify the location. It will talk about applicability and then we're going to move the definitions that were adopted a handful of years ago, again, as a state to address a state requirement from the end of that section up closer to the beginning. We're also doing a few other kind of cleanup sort of amendments when the state required us to adopt certain definitions. We didn't also adopt regulations attached to those, so we've got kind of these orphaned definitions and we're trying to incorporate into our local regulations the suggested regulations from the state's model bylaw. So those, those are the two principal purposes of this amendment. The impact compliance is going to result in an increase in the number of affected properties in town. We have somewhere around a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy five rate payers right now for flood insurance. We've seen a few different numbers, but I think we're more confident now in the analysis that's been done between the currently effective flood insurance rate maps and the the now final twenty twenty three panels and it's landing somewhere around thirty five properties that would be affected that have structures newly added to a floodplain. If we fail to adopt these, the maps at the very least, that would make all properties in town ineligible for federal flood insurance. So this is, you know, an important one to to look at. The current status, as I I mentioned earlier, FEMA issued the letter of final determination on the third, so the effective date of the twenty twenty three panels, and there are eleven of them that are being updated would be July third of twenty twenty four. Again, assuming the town meeting passes this amendment. And then finally, we right now have been having a conversation or an ongoing conversation with DCR and specifically the floodplain engineer for the state. He's reviewing the article, we've had a couple of rounds of back and forth, so this is one I would expect you to consider recommending revised language to town meeting for. But but the review is helpful because it ensures that we're, we're meeting all of the requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program. So that's the the floodplain one, it's you guys have seen, you know, similar amendments to this in the past for the Cape Cod watershed. Most recently in twenty twenty one. But this is, this change was through the Charles watershed. Do you have any questions?
I don't, Emily, I think we've seen this a couple of times through you, this might be a good opportunity if there, you know, the other board members certainly, please raise them.
There's, there's, my understanding and you there's, there's no real option here, right, we 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 kind of have to adopt this.
Yeah, the the only option is kind of the only other option is really nuclear. We, we would no longer be participating in the National Flood Insurance Program.
But to what end, like, why would we? There's no, there's.
I don't know, but it has happened in an adjoining community in, you know, the last handful of years where town meeting did not adopt the flood insurance rate maps.
I think many, many of our fellow residents would prefer that we adopt this.
Yes. Yep.
Thanks, Gordon. Anyone else on the board?
I'm just curious on the relationship, the coordination between these maps and the current sea level rise maps that have been done by the, you know, the coastal you know, Woods Hole and and Kleinfeld and all these other groups. Are these maps in sync with those or are these following those?
They're, they're really two different things, so the the FEMA maps are an assessment of current risk. All those other, you know, the Woods Hole, Kleinfelder, you know, certain resilient mass predictions are about, you know, future risk associated with climate change and sea level rise specifically, so. They're, they're really two different things, the FEMA maps are intended to assess risk and, you know, and insurance rates based on today's conditions.
Thanks, Emily. Anyone else? I'm not sure we'll do this for everyone, but where the board doesn't have a lot of questions, any members of the public have any questions or comments on this? And I see we don't have a lot of people on the call here, but. All right, Emily, so from your perspective, what else needs to be done on this bylaw?
Yeah, we have to conclude the the back and forth with DCR, so I'm expecting the next round of comments by midweek, Wednesday. I I tend to review those with our special real estate council, just to make sure we're all on the same page. And then once, you know, both the town and DCR you know, believe they're in a good place, we'll bring back those revisions to you, so I expect that process to wrap up within the next week, maybe a week and a half.
Okay.
So that we should be positioned for continued hearing at the end of the month.
All right, thank you, Emily, that's helpful.
So we're all set with that one, our next, again, state mandated update is related to, well, it's called the groundwater protection overlay district. The intent is to replace our existing Ackard Pond watershed and Hingham Aquifer Protection District, which is housed in the zoning map part C and under section three D of the bylaw with a new groundwater protection overlay district. It's required by Mass DEP's wellhead protection regulations. DEP sent the town specifically to the Weir River Water System a letter in November of twenty twenty two, so right before the submission of zoning articles for last year's town meeting saying that our regulations are out of compliance with the state regulations and then they granted us a two year window to to get our regulations in order. So again, the next, you know, the upcoming town meeting, it will be our our next and only opportunity to come into compliance before the deadline of November of this year, twenty twenty four. So we've replaced the map and you, you know, on our zoning map, it's that red squiggly line, it's kind of, you know, an unusual shape. More or less in the center of town with the bounds of the Mass DEP Zone Two. A Zone Two is the recharge area to a drinking water well, our public water supply. We also are looking to replace the regulations under section three D with regulations that are more similar to the Mass DEP model bylaw. The current status, the Weir River Water System and the Health Department are reviewing the the draft bylaw. The Health Department in particular will have some questions for DEP about certain provisions in the model bylaw, they're actually in the regulations as well, the state regulations, CMR. And how to, they're related to onsite wastewater disposal, and so we just want to confirm that those regulations need to be housed in zoning when in fact they're already administered, excuse me, by the board. when in fact they're already administered, excuse me, by the Board of Health. The Mass DEP review is outstanding at this point, but expected to take place in the next week or so. Um, and again, as I mentioned before, the compliance deadline is, uh, next November. So we've got to hit this upcoming town meeting. I will say DEP, under these regulations, um, the effect of non-compliance is, like a little more discretionary. So they just say the community should use best efforts to come into compliance. If our best efforts fail to bring us into compliance, then DEP could consider, um, non-compliance when reviewing something like, uh, you know, a water withdrawal limit, um, for our entire public water system. But, you know, large issues like that, that we don't necessarily have on the immediate horizon, but, but could at some point.
Thanks, Emily. Any questions across the board? And we really saw, I think we saw even a more subtle version of this earlier on. We initially started talking about it, going through the differences.
The only question I had on this is the recharge area. High Street is really kind of the high point where everything south of High Street drains to the Ackord Pond and everything north of that drains to the, down the Weir River. And I'm just wondering, is, is that, are the, is, are the basins, the inter-basin transfer, is any of that, uh, as part of this mapping review or is this just general, general restrictions relative to the groundwater protection?
So there, it's mostly to ensure that pollutants aren't getting into our public drinking water supply. Um, and, and I apologize, it's a little bit tricky to read the bounds of this map, but it's the recharge areas for the Free Downing Prospect, Scotland and Fulling Mill wells. So it's, it's in some ways overlaps with our current Ackord Pond and Hingham Aquifer Protection Overlay District. In some areas, it's, um, a little bit smaller and other areas it's larger. But this, these are the bounds that the state requires that we regulate.
Emily, what are we waiting for here? Additional kind of open items?
Um, on this one, it's really just getting the Health Department comfortable and then getting a quick confirmation from DEP that what, what, you know, we're putting in front of town meeting will be compliant with their regulations. This one I, we've got a little more confidence with because we did a wholesale replacement of our existing bylaw with the, in essence, the model bylaw.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. So the next and last, um, state mandated, uh, zoning amendment you guys are quite familiar with. The MBTA Communities Multifamily Housing Overlay District, um, article would create regulations that allow multifamily development by right within a new overlay district, which would be approximately 50 acres, um, of land. The, um, the district would be further broken out into sub-districts. So you can see what these areas are here. These are kind of the informal addressing. The zoning article refers to them through map and lot. But we've got the Avalon Two Development and Hewitt's Landing as our first sub-district. That would allow up to 40 units per acre. The second sub-district is the Avalon One Town Homes, um, that would allow 25 units per acre. Sub-district three is the Avalon Multifamily. It's like a four and a four-story building, um, would allow 18 units per acre. And then sub-district four, um, which is the Cove and then the, um, Contractors Yard at the corner of Hobart and French Streets, uh, would allow up to 15 units per acre. To a large extent, these sub-districts really reflect the multifamily housing that we have already produced within a half mile of public transit. In particular, the MBTA ferry at the shipyard. So this is kind of our, our first, you know, attempt going to town meeting to create by right multifamily zoning because all of the multifamily housing that we just read in the sub-districts, uh, was permitted instead through a special permit or a comprehensive permit process as opposed to by right. It would bring us into compliance with the state mandate. The tool, I would say, will, will be available going forward. So that if the town would like to create additional capacity for multifamily housing outside of these areas, um, we could consider that certainly at a future town meeting. The impact of non-compliance by statute, uh, we would no longer be available for, um, three state funding sources. The ones that really affect us are the housing choice, both, um, capital and planning grants, and then the Mass Works Program. Uh, the local capital projects fund, uh, is money that goes to housing authorities. The state has, um, since final guidelines were issued, said that they may also take compliance into, you know, consideration when making other funding decisions, either through the Executive Office of Economic Development, Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, um, and the, and the MBTA along with others. So, you know, we see here, um, some programs that are administered, whoops, I apologize, by EEA, Mass Development. And I think that may, may be the list. Some of these were not likely to access. I don't think Hingham would be eligible, eligible for a small, our rural and small town development fund. But these other ones could be very helpful. Um, and it, it's also just simply open-ended that they, they could take, uh, compliance into consideration in making any funding decision. So this one is a little heavier-handed than the best efforts that Mass DEP is requiring that we undertake on the groundwater protection initiative.
Well, what's, what's not on here is, um, at, at least the, the stated interest of the state attorney general to pursue litigation with communities that choose not to comply. Now, whether, whether under the statute she's able to do that or not, that, and I, I'm not saying put it on the slide, but for our purposes, like that's, that's another thing out there. That's way different than some of these discretionary, uh, grant programs. I'm going to ask a question that I may have already asked and you may have already answered, but with my adult brain, I didn't retain it. The sub-districts that, that you identified there that do include the previously approved and existing, multifamily developments. Have we gotten a hand signal from DHCD that that's acceptable? To them, because my record, am I, I'm not wrong, that in the beginning they were saying that was not, right?
Initially, we were actually looking at like Beals Cove Village and Hingham Woods. And, but then after we had started working with those, you know, representatives of those condominiums, the DHCD's interpretation of their regulations changed so that we had to measure the half mile from a point centered on the, the actual access to the transit station as opposed to the outer limits of the parking lot associated with that transit station. So, um, they confirmed that, uh, Hewitt's, excuse me, um, Beals Cove Village and Hingham Woods were just outside, yeah, of the half mile. The Cove, the radius just touches the front and DHCD has confirmed that that's eligible as are the others that we've identified. The one area that's outside of a half mile, but not too far outside is the French Street Contractor Yard. And we are allowed to have up to 25% of our district outside of a half mile radius. The area of that property, um, I think is around 14% of our overall, overall district. So a little bit less than what we'd be able to add. Um, and then I guess related to that, DHCD has also confirmed that they look at these parcels as if they're vacant. So they do take into consideration, you know, certain restrictions like wetlands or floodplain or, you know, conservation land, publicly owned land. But beyond those, um, it doesn't matter if the properties are already improved. They're really just looking at zoning capacity, um, and, and not requiring production.
Thanks, Emily.
Sure.
The board has seen, uh, certainly iterations of this presentation quite a bit. Any, any other questions or comments on the board, you know, helping Emily, you know, fine tune this?
Yeah, just a clarification on the density on the, I think it's the first slide. So is that for the first three sub-districts, is that the existing or is that really what's proposed?
That's what's proposed for the new, um, overlay district. So we, like DHCD, aren't necessarily trying to, we're not taking into account what's on the ground and trying to match that with our zoning. We're just creating the zoning capacity that, uh, will hit the minimum unit capacity that they require us to zone for.
Okay. So that's what's, that, that's where you're getting the 40 and the 25 and stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
So what's the, what's the total number of units they need?
Uh, 1,490 and right now our compliance model is showing around 1,500 units. So we're, we're just there.
So Emily, when I look at the, uh, three sub-districts here, one, two and three, what is the net, um, yield? In other words, this 40 units per acre on 319 Lincoln Street. Currently, the FAR is what? What is it? 25 units per acre? I'm just trying to get a sense of, we've got 1,300 units. What does this mean? What does this net increase of units mean?
Well, again, there's not necessarily going to be any increase in units. We're just zoning for capacity. If those properties are redeveloped at some point in the future. Avalon Two, I happen to know just because I worked on that permit, um, that that's 50 units per acre. So it's right now denser than what our zoning would allow.
So I'm just trying to get a sense of, of, you know, and looking at the earlier intent of this MBTA Communities legislation, I thought it was to actually produce more units. But I guess we're, we're, we're saying that we've already produced the units. And yet on these three parcels or these four parcels, there's the capacity of doing additional units. And I was just trying to get a sense of what is that range?
Yeah, I, I don't have the acreage here in front of me and Avalon, I just happen to know off the top of my head. So, you know, we can look at that like through the compliance model or otherwise. But again, the, the statute and the regulations associated with the statute are just about creating by right zoning capacity. It, it doesn't mean that any additional units will ever get built. We do think of these, the, you know, the one that maybe, um, would, would be converted in the nearer term, potentially if the property owner is interested, is the non-conforming contractors yard, um, to the extent that, you know, that's, it's almost raw land, it's being used, but, um, it's not really already improved by buildings.
I'm just, I'm just thinking that, you know, down the road, when a town meeting votes to approve this and we, we update the zoning bylaw to allow this as of right, situation, uh, capacity, uh, or potential. I'm just trying to get a sense of it. It, it would be as of right. So there really wouldn't be any, you know, they'd have to comply with this, the dimensional aspects of the bylaw. But in terms of the density, we, it's by rights. So the, so those ultimately could be, uh, created. That's all. I'm just trying to get a sense of the, of the proportion, the perspective. And the other, of course, the other question on this too, I suppose we'll get to this later, but what does this all mean in terms of infrastructure in the town? You know, I mean, if we had a potential for so many units, you know, how many additional people and population? And what does that mean in terms of the other infrastructure, in terms of schools and, you know, other kinds of, um, capacity issues that we have to provide, you know, water and everything else in the town?
Yeah. Oh, I appreciate that. Yeah. That's, that question's spot on. And that's why with this initial effort to get into compliance, we're focused on the multifamily housing that we've already built. And, and part of that is because of the deadlines. So we're, we're, we're hoping we can comply. But then in the future, after we better understand, you know, if additional land is going to be incorporated into the district, we know before we rezone it, what are the impacts on, you know, sewer, traffic, schools, public services, et cetera? Because through the by rights zoning, we're not necessarily able to mitigate all of those impacts through special permit conditions or comprehensive permit conditions. So, you know, it's a, it's a helpful tool. Certainly it's available to generate, you know, additional capacity and actual production down the road. But it just, we'd have to do more analysis if it's going to go really far beyond what we've already built out.
I understand that in terms of a, just in terms of the economic model, looking down the road, you know, that we're, we're in a situation where every year at town meeting, we look at, uh, an increase in expenditures, um, for new services and new facilities and what have you, and, and new, um, you know, compensation and everything else to reflect the increasing density of the town. And I'm just wondering, you know, I know that we have the sewer district in the, the northern end of the town, which is at risk right now, and we're going to need to capitalize that in a significant way. And then I, I'm just looking at this in terms of what I'm seeing in terms of the climate action planning, where we're talking about, you know, sea level rises, the sea level rise along North Street and the waterfront and what we're going to have to do there. I'm just thinking, is there an overall sort of economic model study on what's happening? And this is part of it. This is one chapter, uh, on these increased kinds of, um, infrastructure demands? Or is that something that would be coming later?
Yeah, I think it will be coming down the road. I mean, certainly we did that type of analysis when let's say the Avalon Two came up. Um, and there was, uh, you know, conditions of the zoning board's comprehensive permit that required both on and off-site mitigation. There was also a development agreement between, um, the, the developer and the select board that provided other, um, public mitigation. So, and that was based on the analysis that we did of those particular projects. Beyond that, I mean, there's, there's been analysis of sea level rise impacts on sewer infrastructure. You know, Kleinfelder and others, uh, had, undertook. But, uh, we don't have anything focused specifically on this type of growth yet, or this type of zoning.
Is there anything in the state program here where, you know, sometimes I look at this as an unfunded mandate? You know, is there anything in the state thinking on this where they're going to be offering capitalization to help increase the, uh, you know, pay for infrastructure? I know under the 40 hour program, there was subsidies relative to unit subsidies to help compensate the town for expenditures for infrastructure, et cetera. Is there anything in the state that's going to help us fund this stuff?
No, it's more the inverse of that. Like you get punished. If you don't comply. But they do have a lot of money getting injected into housing programs, um, and infrastructure programs. So, you know, we'll, we'll see how those get allocated.
Well, and one of the reasons that they needed to do this piece of legislation is because 40 R didn't do what they wanted it to do, right? The 40, the 40 R incentives were insufficient for people to develop, uh, residential properties adjacent to, uh, public transportation. So that, that carrot was insufficient, so they went and grabbed this stick.
Yeah.
And, uh, so we, yeah, we will, we will see, you know, um, and, you know, a little bit of what this is revealing is. is, is sort of what a paper tiger this is, right? They're just, they're, they're just asking us to, to zone for capacity, not to actually produce, which I hope makes them feel that. But, and, and again, to the point that there was no affordable component required under the legislation. Emily, are we going to propose some affordable element as part of this overlay?
Yeah, and, and that's kind of, you know, one of our next steps. So we did get the MHP 3A TA grant that allowed us to complete the draft compliance module. We also got a housing choice grant to complete an economic feasibility analysis so that we can justify something higher than the base allowed inclusionary zoning requirement of 10%. They'll let you go up to 20% if you can prove with a professional study that it would be economic. So we issued a request for quotes. We did receive three, all from firms that have previously completed a minimum of one, some up to, you know, six or so of these economic feasibility analyses. And we hope to make a decision within the next day or so as to who to engage. The deadline for that, and this is part of the reason why our timeline may draw out for a little bit, is at the very latest March 1st, but we're hoping to get it, it within the first week or so of February, of February, sorry, before vacation, so that you guys can assess it and know, you know, do we modify our penciled in 10% to 15% or 12 and a half percent or 18%?
10% at least keeps us in port, right?
So, yeah, it's neutral, but we prefer that this have a positive impact on our subsidized housing inventory.
Fair enough. Last thing, just if you go back to the sub-district slide for a sec. We, we should be prepared, maybe, maybe nobody at town meeting will ask this question. But as you described, the, the most likely of these sub-districts to see any actual development is the one that is furthest from the various station.
Yeah. Yeah.
So.
It's about a third of a mile.
The, 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 the point is to make this sort of TOD and, you know, close access and blah, blah, blah. And just the way we're, the, the, the way it's shaking out here is the most likely development will not achieve that. I just think we need to be prepared for that question.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's a good point. It, it's really just outside the half mile radius of the East Wamis commuter rail station.
Right, so it captures, I guess that's right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So it's, so that's the one that you're pointing to there.
Yeah, not too, too far from West Hingham. It's, it's almost backing up to the rail line. It's just that the, the point for the transit station is outside of the half mile from this location.
So Gordon, you raised a question, kind of, you know, very helpful, just there aren't a lot of people on the call tonight, you know, and, and maybe they're here to talk about this, I think it's certainly kind of listed some feedback. But just in terms of public outreach, you're the town, understand that we're doing. I mean, again, yeah, our attitude has been we don't have a choice here. And I think that's probably a fair starting point. You know, the consequences of not doing it are pretty severe. And I think the unknown is probably the most severe potential component. So what additional public outreach are we thinking about, Emily, in terms of just raising awareness slash inviting feedback? To extend, you know, there is feedback and just making sure we, you know, people are aware of what we're doing and how we're trying to comply.
Sure. Well, just to quick recap, to get us where we are today, we've had five public meetings, either individually of the planning board and/or the select board and, and one jointly, getting to, you know, the district locations or the district, the options to, to consider and study. After those were selected, the planning board held three public meetings discussing the zoning leading up to the December 1st deadline. Staffs had a number of discussions offline with the affected property owners, met with representatives of the Democratic Town Committee, the World Affairs Group through the Senior Center. There's a scheduled regional forum that I'll participate in, being hosted by the League of Women Voters in mid-February. We also hope to engage our PR firm to start blasting, you know, little articles and announcements about this particular zoning amendment. We'll, we'll, you know, give a nod to the other pending zoning articles as well. Some may not be as exciting so that folks feel like they're invited to participate in the upcoming public hearings, which again should extend into February, potentially into early March. And hopefully everybody will be well informed by the time we get to town meeting.
Emily, perfect, yeah, it's all right. It was not, they're not mean for you to perceive it as a question of what we haven't done yet. Just want to make sure, obviously it's in the news, it's, you know, it's on the front page of the paper every so often in different communities. And, you know, it's a topic of interest, I think, you know, statewide, obviously. But I just want to make sure that they send people in Hingham have comments that we're giving them or at least we publicize enough to offer them the chance. And we've done a lot of that already and it sounds like there's more to come. So that's, that was my only area of concern. Thank you.
Of course. Are you ready for the next one?
I think so, please go ahead.
Okay, great. Okay, this is the next batch of zoning articles. The, the few next slides are going to be focused on issues that were identified locally, not by the state. The first of which is an update to our nursing home use. The article would broaden the existing use under section 3A, 3.8B to specifically refer to assisted living facilities. That's, you know, the most frequent type of application we get under this particular use code. But the current bylaw doesn't in fact use that language. And two, to provide for the care of both disabled and elderly persons. You can see the red line there, the underlying text is additional text, the struck through text, we, we suggest deleting because it's ambiguous. But now the, the use would allow nursing home, assisted living facility, rest home, convalescent home, congregate living facility, facility, or other non-correctional institutional use, providing support and care for disabled or elderly persons. It seems to be consistent with the master plan, which has a goal to provide for the development of housing appropriately designed, managed and located for older adults and people with disabilities. Because we'd newly and explicitly be allowing homes for people with special needs throughout town. Most, most of our zoning districts do allow this use by special permit. And it's also, you know, would, hopefully it's intended to meet some of the needs identified in the housing plan, which says, you know, somewhere between eight and nine percent of the population, at least at the time that the plan was being developed, you know, have special needs. That's that one, it's a little bit shorter.
Thanks, Emily.
If there are no questions on this one, which I, I do think is probably one of the most straightforward amendments you'll see this year.
I'm just, just want to say for the record, I know Rita was not feeling well since I think it looks like she dropped off the call or just whatever it's worth, so make sure the public record reflects that.
No, thank you. We'll make sure she listens to the recording of the rest of the presentation.
The only question I had on the assisted living one, Emily, was, does that affect in the use table? Does that affect any of the locations or is this just more of a definition change?
This is just the definition. We may in the future want to look to the, the small number of zoning districts where the use is not permitted, specifically official and open space. The other two off, oh no, there's the other three. One is business recreation, we're not likely to see this use at the country club. And the others are waterfront, the waterfront business district, which is just a few small parcels, the inner harbor and the waterfront recreation district, which is a landlocked parcel in Bearcove Park Drive, in Bearcove Park, excuse me. So, but official and open space, that, that might be one we want to look at in the future.
You know, one of the questions I had was, you know, the Lincoln School Apartments. If this were definition were to be included, is that in a, is that in an open space district? Because it's a former school or is it, would, would that allow an assisted living facility expansion at the Lincoln School?
Well, so I do, I do believe it's in the official and open space district. That, that development was permitted through a comprehensive permit back in 1979. So modification of the, the building would probably be permitted through a modification of the comp permit.
And also in the industrial district or the Office Park District in Southham, would that allow this as a, as a residential use within that district? Or, or is that part of this other discussion about location?
No, it's already allowed. Yeah, and all those other districts. And I can confirm for you really quick, but that's my recall. 3.8B. Yeah, it's allowed everywhere except for the four districts we just discussed.
All righty.
Thanks, Emily.
Yep. Great, we'll move right along. The next article is also represents a change to the use table. It would create a new use for brew pubs, breweries, wineries and distilleries that would be allowed by special permit, special permit A2 in the business A, business B and industrial park districts. You can see the structure of that amendment here. It, one is going to modify the current retail sales of alcoholic beverages use to make that 4.18A. And then it's going to add a new subsection 4.18B for the brewery, winery and distillery use. You can see unlike the last use we looked at, this use would not be permitted in most districts. It's limited just to, again, business A, B, which are relatively small and the industrial park, which is in Southham. It's consistent with the master plan in general in that it supports local businesses and would attract new enterprises that provide employment and deliver goods and services to residents and visitors alike. It's a use that I suspect many of you have seen crop up in nearby communities, Wamis and Rockland and Situate, Plymouth, just to name a few. And Hingham presently does not allow this type of use outside of the shipyard redevelopment area where drinking establishments are allowed, absent serving of food, which can be a limitation for these types of uses.
So in this use, Emily, is food allowed in the, in the brew pub use?
Yeah, sorry, that question Kevin actually raised on a call earlier today. And that wasn't necessarily the intent. We do allow breweries or I guess a winery. If it's, if that's an accessory component to principal restaurant use, I'm newly concerned that the reference to brew pub would be taking that type of, you know, the restaurant that also happens to make some sort of alcohol, taking it out of the restaurant use. And I don't think that was our intent. These are for the breweries that, you know, principally are producing a product, but then it can also be consumed on site and then they might have a food truck or something outside. But they wouldn't, their, their principal business is not making food.
Emily, that asked this as well, but just for public record, I'm sorry, Gary, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just concerned about when people see the word, the two words brew pub, they assume it's, you know, it's a pub and food and everything else, you know?
Yeah, I, I, we need to think a little bit more about it because, you know, again, Kevin just raised this earlier today. We might want to strike the brew pub and then rely for the brewery, winery, distillery on the state licensing definitions, one of which is not a brew pub.
Yeah, I'm not saying against the idea of a brew pub, I was just wondering in terms of the definition.
There have to be some other communities that have done this already and we could look at their wording, right? You know, the places that only allowed the sort of the food truck accessory option at one of these breweries. Man, I, I think, it sounds like we will probably end up striking group ups, right? At some point, just to avoid that.
Yeah, we, we have done some poking around and we're either not like, like looking at the right communities or we're not looking at the right sections of their bylaws or we just don't understand how they permit these types of uses. Like they may consider them manufacturers. And, and we did have a distillery in the industrial park a number of years ago, Bradford Distillery. And we have a provision that allows up to 15% of the floor area to be used for retail sales. And the boards, zoning board and the planning board permitted, you know, periodic tastings within that space. So we've seen something similar, but it wasn't actually how, it was, it was labeled a manufacturing use with an accessory retail use.
Okay.
And some other communities may just allow drinking establishments like a bar. And I, this isn't intended to do that either. It's, you know, it's got to be a sale or consumption of something that the, you know, they're actually producing.
Right.
And Emily, is it limited to that? Like, I mean, to take this to extreme, if they, can a brew pub serve like a Coca-Cola, you know, or something like, you know?
Oh, sure.
I mean, okay, I just want to make sure that we're not, we're not closing something silly that you'd obviously want to promote.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm the one that kind of asked for this to just be considered by the board. So I'll, I'll get it some more thought too. Just, I mean, the definitions of breweries, wineries, distilleries, their licensing definitions, Emily, right? And we, you know, I discussed this briefly, but that's where they're, that's where they're found.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, through the A, B, C, C.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, we have the, the addendum here, which may include beer garden tasting areas, food and/or beverage. So that suggests that, you know, you're allowing that kind of additional service of food or provision of food in some capacity or facilitating the provision of food allowance.
Yeah, so it's only the allowance. So it would just take the, you know, the restaurant that they would take like a Untold or Hingham Beer Works, that one really matters because it's in the shipyard, out of the restaurant category and put it into a new category that may or may not be allowed in the same districts. It should be the same districts though. Restaurants were not allowing in many other locations, except for maybe limited industrial park and industrial.
Yeah, waterfront, I don't know, do we allow, I don't know technically what's the, you know, kind of what's the snack shack on the waterfront there?
The snack shack is a snack shack. It's, um, it's, that's a, something under the harbor overlay district.
Well, when you look at some of the brew pubs in Boston, for example, Harpoon, you know, that's just, you know, kind of a tasting for, you know, beer they brew on site, you know, they brew on site, but I don't remember if they had food. I just, not that it's a problem, Sam Adams, you know, the tap room. I mean, I'm just thinking the ones around the garden and other areas. Maybe those are models more.
Thanks, Emily. So we'll, we'll, we'll get back to this too. Maybe we can circulate the definitions, obviously just to read them. Can we think about this issue of the brew pub and what that might do? But this is very helpful, thank you.
Of course. Okay. Sorry.
I'm sorry, I have a question. Um, my name is Kathleen Nugent and I just want to know, can I get the full citation of the section that's proposed to be amended, just so I can do my own research? Just so I can do my own research.
Yeah, of, of course, the, the new section would be section three A. Comma, three point eight B. And then you can see the text of the pending zoning article on the planning board's webpage. As both the existing zoning bylaw.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thanks, Emily, anyone else? Please go ahead, Emily, thank you.
Okay. The next one affects the maximum allowed heights in the harbor overlay district. It, it does two things. One eliminates the requirement that the height buildings in the overlay district be measured from the pre-construction grade. Rather than the finished grade. So, you know, the height measurement is done differently in the harbor overlay district right now than any other district. And then two, it would allow the space located between the current maximum allowed wall height of twenty feet. And the maximum allowed roof peak of twenty eight feet. For buildings in the district to be occupied. Right now, that space is limited to storage. And between these two factors, we're finding that properties were getting pretty constrained. When they have to address free board requirements. Almost the entire district is also within a floodplain. So often there are regulations that say first floors have to be above the regulated base flood elevation. So that's, you know, between the pre-construction grade and that height, they've got unusable space. And then we were also limiting the use of space that physically exists on the outside. But we were not allowing the inside to be actively used, bless you. So you can see the language and how it works here. I think I found a typo today in what we submitted, so I apologize for that. I got a, an extra reference in here. But item one, the current bylaw is pretty circular. It basically says in the official and open space district. The maximum height is going to be reduced from thirty five feet to twenty eight feet. And it's going to be measured the way described in the waterfront. In, when the underlying district is the waterfront business. So, so this would just kind of clean that up. So it's not referring to something else, we're just providing the, the requirement, right, whoops, sorry. Right within the, that section. Item two is effective for waterfront business. District properties that are also in the overlay district. And it, you know, this, this one's worded a little bit differently in part because it's an allowance. So in the underlying zoning, the waterfront business district, the maximum height of buildings is twenty feet. The overlay allows it to go up to twenty eight feet. But again, precluded use of the space between the twenty foot wall height and the peak of the roof. So this eliminates that, that limitation.
So Emily, we have a, a, but it's, it's a violation hours with a warrant article for allowing seawalls to be raised a certain amount of height. And so I'm just reading.
Last year.
Last year, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'm just, it's, it's getting late, I'm losing.
They're all blended together.
The, so we allow the sea levels of the, the seawalls to be elevated by what, what was, I can't, five feet? I can't remember what the number was. So this is measured from finished grade. So what this assumes is that a new building, the first floor is going to be higher. If the sea law, if the sea walls are going to be higher, which sort of implies that the grade at the waterfront is going to be raised.
Yeah.
The ridge stays the same. You know, the, the buildings aren't, you're reducing the actual height of the building. So the overall ridge height and massing of the buildings is fundamentally the same. So how does this impact an existing building? It's.
It, it doesn't, I mean, these are just allowances. So if something is existing, it, it continues to exist. It's when they go to make a change to one of, you know, a property down there. And some of the buildings, you know, if they improve over a particular amount. I think it's thirty percent of the value of the building, they'd have to come into compliance with FEMA regulations. That's when we have to start looking at free board requirements. So they'd be required to elevate above the base flood elevation. And that, that space would count, would count against their twenty eight feet, but it wouldn't be usable.
I see, so I'm, I'm thinking of, you know, Red Eye Roasters and Stars and North Street and, you know, the Fruit Center, all those buildings that are down there within that low elevation that ultimately is going to have to be raised. And so those buildings, if they down the road would have to make revisions to, to raise their first floors. Then would they be limited to a certain grade height of the, of the top of the building? Or does everything just rise? Are they allowed an increase in height to compensate?
Well, so right now, they, they are not allowed anything extra to compensate. This would allow them, in the event that the entire grade was changing. And potentially raise the grade, let's say, is raised to something that's higher than the base flood elevation. Then they don't need to do the free board.
I see, okay.
Yeah, so it could vary.
Okay.
Thanks, Emily.
Yeah, of course. Okay, the next one is the abandonment or discontinuance of non-conforming conditions. So this section of the bylaw we've played with, or not played, we've, we're not playing with these, it's all serious. We've modified on a number of occasions in, in recent years. The intent of this particular modification is threefold. So it would clarify that the conforming single family or two family use can be reestablished within an existing, and I, I want to emphasize existing, non-conforming building that's been discontinued or abandoned. So the structure is still there, nobody's lived in it in forty years. Presently, the bylaw allows someone to reestablish the conforming single family or two family use of that by right. This amendment would newly require a special permit, just a special permit A one. It simply to notify, you know, abutters who may not be used to seeing activity next door. That somebody is going to be improving the property and caring for it and to become their new neighbor. Two, it would allow by special permit, this time an A two, a non-conforming single family dwelling that's been demolished. So it's, it's no longer in the ground. To be reconstructed within a certain timeframe and within certain dimensional parameters. So it, within ten years, provided you're not creating new or extending existing non-conformities. You could be eligible for a special permit to reestablish a conforming use of a non-conforming single family. So that's a new provision, that is not something we presently allow. And then three, it would apply the same time parameters to the reestablishment of existing on the ground, dimensionally non-conforming buildings for permitted uses other than single family or two family dwellings. We already allow it, subject to a special permit A two. This would simply say that it's allowed, but only within the ten year timeframe. After ten years, everybody's really used to having no activity on a lot that no longer has a structure on it. So it couldn't be reestablished unless it was, you know, fully conforming.
So a couple of questions, Emily. I've been thinking about this in terms of the context of several houses that I'm aware of in the town that are either not, they're not used or they're abandoned. So under number one. If a house is conforming to the current bylaw, but it is not used. And it is not abandoned. It's still as of right?
Yep, yeah, I mean, it's.
So if it's not used, the utilities are on, it's, it's maintained, but it's not occupied. The use does not, you don't lose the use whether it's a single or a two family use.
Yeah, or if it needs work to be brought up to speed, they, it's a by right building permit.
Yeah, so people are working on the building or they're doing whatever they're doing with the building. And it's basically in conformity. Now, let's say a building that is unused, that is pre-existing, non-conforming, but is maintained but not used. That's still an as of right?
Um, not used, how?
In other words, it's, it's not occupied, but it's owned and it's part of a person's private property.
Yeah, there's certain variables with respect to that. So if the customary equipment needed to support a house is removed from it. Then it's likely going to be deemed abandoned. If the building commissioner or the executive health director issues a condemnation notice. And it's not responded to within a certain timeframe. That, that would no longer be by right.
I understand. And that would, that would be more in the category of abandoned. And abandoned would mean a building that's cold or the utilities are disconnected or it's not, you know, basically it's not habitable. Versus, the distinction is not habitable versus not occupied.
Right.
Okay, so then, so, and this is the structure, assumes the structure is fully there and that, you know, nothing's really changed. And so if somebody wants to do something inside the house and they're working on the house, they get a building permit. Currently, that doesn't require notification of the neighbors or butters. However, if they do something outside on the building and there's a building per, permit for roof siding, windows, whatever. That still doesn't, in the current, any building in the town doesn't require notification of the butters. It's only, it's only if the work on the outside of the building involves a change in the setbacks. So in other words, you're building, expanding the envelope. Or, you know, I'm just trying to think this through in terms of existing situations. If you expand the envelope, you need a building permit to do that. And typically then is there notification to the butters from the building department? Or is there only notification if it's triggered site plan review?
It's only if it triggers a permitting process, aside from the building permit process.
Right, so for example, a, an existing house that's unoccupied in a historic district. If they wanted to do work on the outside of the house, they'd have to get a certificate of appropriateness triggering the permitting process. So any home, whether it's not unoccupied or abandoned in a historic district already has a notification of the butters. And given the permitting process. So anything that triggers a permitting process would require a, a notification to the butters. Okay, one of the things that I'm concerned about is we have a number of houses in the town that are, basically some are unoccupied and some are abandoned. And the abandoned ones, some of them are fully intact and some of them are a wreck. And they've been that way for a long time. And so I'm just wondering. In the experience I've had with trying to get a couple of owners to be responsive. They've paid the taxes, the houses are abandoned, they don't really think they have to do anything. I mean, I think they're crazy from a financial perspective, but, you know, they don't really want to do anything with the building, they don't really have to. But if they wanted, what I'm trying to figure out is, does, is there an imposition of another level of permitting complexity? That would further discourage somebody from being responsible and dealing with a property. When, when one knows right now that they can do it as of right. I'm just concerned about the discouraging people who own buildings and they're abandoned. And this, I can think of ten of them right off the bat.
You, you know, you're aware of way more than we are.
Okay, I know, I just.
That's on your list.
Yeah, no, I just, I mean, you, you know, for example, if, if, I like to look at examples because the, the language is all very clear to those who understand this stuff, but I, I like, I need to see an example. For example, seventeen Hobart Street. That's a house that had a fire over twenty years ago and the house is a wreck. And I don't know who owns it and what's happening, and I'm sure they're having to pay property taxes on the property, but clearly there's no use.
Well, so, but that's a conforming property.
It's a conforming property.
With the exception of like the front setback, I think. So nobody's going to keep that structure, right? At this point, I think it's going to be a new house. And, you know, there are different protections for houses damaged by catastrophe. They already by right had, you know, if, if they had wanted to reestablish the non-conforming front yard setback, had four years to do that. And then if they wanted to build something new in a conforming location on the lot, they could do that by right and they still haven't done it. Generally, a special permit, I mean, it shouldn't be viewed as a hindrance. A special permit is something we explicitly allow, it's just subject to a public review.
I understand that and I could see where, I'm trying to think this through. I could see on an abandonment where the structure is in, is in peril. Or, or as, you know, the place is falling apart, but the foundation is still there. So if they take the start, the wood structure away and they still have the foundation. They could still do it by right if the foundation meets the current zoning setbacks.
Um, if, if the law's also conforming because a, a new structure we're building on a non-conforming lot is also considered non-conforming.
Okay, so then that would trigger a, a permit, a site plan review permit, probably. Okay, I'm just, I'm, I'm having trouble reconciling adding a layer of permitting on something that's already allowed by, by right. I, I'm trying to think it through in terms of examples of properties in the town.
Yeah, it's one that comes up, you know, really infrequently. I, I actually, I'd have to check with the building permit, but I can't think of a single property that's taken advantage of that. It's relatively new though, right? It was just a twenty twenty where we allowed the reconstruction of those houses as opposed to just like the, you know, rehab.
I remember the discussion in twenty twenty, I went back and looked at the town meeting discussion. And it seems to me that the focus was on, pretty much the focus was on an as of right. And I guess it was specifically in twenty twenty, I thought we did not want to do it by special permit. So I'd have to go back and reread it, but.
Yeah. I mean, for my, yeah, my recall it was to allow reconstruction. Because in certain instances, having a derelict structure there that wasn't salvageable, that just didn't benefit the neighborhood.
Exactly, and, and I, I took it at the time to, to, to see where we didn't, we, we wanted to proactively encourage people to deal with some of these properties, allowing reconstruction. Okay, I just, just wanted to share that, I, I still aren't really solved on that.
Thanks, Emily, I'm just counting on the time too, just want to make sure we, you know, just make sure we want to get through the areas. We can also table some if you think it's better.
We should be able to get through the rest pretty quickly.
Sure, yeah, absolutely, no, happy to move forward with them.
Okay, uh, okay, I hope, we'll see. So the next one would modify certain special requirements in the official and open space district. Too intense, the first is to remove certain special requirements that are applicable in the official and open space. Uh, too intense. The first is to remove certain special requirements that are applicable in the official and open space district. Um, these require structures which includes, you know, septic systems, buildings. Um, et cetera, and other improvements to be located between fifty and a hundred feet. From a residential district, um, which is much more limiting than. Most likely the residential district that happens to be next door. Um, and then two, it would create an exemption um in our definition of structure. For certain recreational improvements like a basketball hoop, a backstop. You've seen some of these projects in recent months. Um, but also field lighting. Uh, the parenthetical there would apply to field lighting specifically that. Um, even though field lighting would be exempt from, you know, height limitations, let's say. Um, it would not be exempt from site plan review. Um, that's in part because this board is used to. Reviewing photometric plans and applying um the the spillage. Um, well, the non-al allowance of spillage uh through site plan review applications. Um, provided that the field light is not closer than fifteen feet from a property line. Um, we locally identified the need for this in part um. After the completion of the um. Fields and um sports or fields and courts um study done through the rec department a number of years ago. Uh, they had asked uh for a review of. Certain potential improvements to existing fields. Uh, a few of those included relocating things like backstops. Um, improving field lighting, which may be taller, but because of um new technology. Is more focused um and does not, you know, doesn't impact butters. Uh, potentially as field lighting may have in the past. Um, and had asked for kind of a zoning analysis of whether those types of improvements would be allowed. Uh, many of them would trigger variance process presently. Um. Uh, one field specifically that um we have planned improvements for is um Lynch Field. Uh, they they have an existing variance for their lights. Um, but the lights are are really not adequate. Um, presently need to be upgraded, but they can't make significant um changes to those. Without triggering another variance process. Um, also. Uh, the baseball fields next to the new Cove development, uh. Fly balls get um or foul balls uh get out of the um. The backstop and fence enclosures and have been damaging vehicles um on the property next door. Uh, but tho- those fences are within, you know, the required. Uh, well, in that case, it's a forty foot setback, um, because it's not adjacent to a residential district. It's just adjacent to a residential development. Um, but the base uh setback. Uh, in the official and open space district is forty feet. Um, so this is, you know, one for discussion. Um. We'll see what.
One thing I would offer on this one is that um when you look at uh. The different kinds of impacts, you know, their lighting is a quiet. Impact. You know, if it goes, if the foot candles are higher and it goes over the lot line. But the other ones are acoustic. Um, I would. Give careful consideration to a basketball hoop fifteen feet from a residential lot line. Um. If you've ever lived. In a house that was a basketball hoop in the driveway, you know how loud it is. Um. I I, anything that's acoustic crosses the property line much quicker than anything that's visual, so and it can become more annoying, so. I would just put that in. I don't think that's enough for a basketball hoop. I could see it for lighting, but. Or a backstop for a baseball, you know, field, but. You don't have a direct impact like a hockey uh backstop or a basketball hoop. They're very loud. So I just, I would. Could offer that for consideration.
Okay. Anybody else have thoughts?
Emily, so on the lighting, just so I understand with the site plan review, um. That means that they'd be kind of, you know, I don't know what lighting posts are today, but whatever they are tall, maybe it's allowed to be that tall. Because the site plan review would really just be looking at the, you know, the illumination, you know, and bleeding into neighboring properties, which is perfectly appropriate. But there's no, the second review doesn't allow for saying, hey, you know, a hundred and fifty feet is too tall or whatever it may be, a hundred feet's too tall or something like that, right? That 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 is one limitation is relying on the site plan review.
Yeah, unless it's, you know, affecting one of the. Performance standards, but I I can't off the top of my head envision how that would be possible.
Yeah, I'm not I'm not opposed to it. I just want to make sure I'm thinking about it right, you know, that that we're we're limiting really on the kind of the bleeding of the light to neighboring properties, not the. Physical presence of the structure so much then.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I mean, one of the things we found all across in the high school fields is that the low cutoff fixtures that. They have for those fields are really good in terms of shielding the light from the. From behind the fixture to the lot line. The projection outboard is another story, but.
Yeah, but but the second interview does cover kind of neighbor, the impact on neighboring property. So whether it's behind or in front, it's going to be analyzed with that in mind. Um, I just want to be thinking about the the physical structure, but I'm, you know. But you know, not not a problem. Um. But just in case, you know, people want to talk about that. Uh, to me, it's different than like a backstop. Yeah, I might feel concerned about the physicality of that. Think it's actually fine with it, I think, but just thinking about it. Thank you.
Yep, okay, we'll do some some more homework on this one and. Circle back around. Um, oops. Is it, was that a repeat slide? Oh, I guess here's the language of it.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so anyways, we'll move to the next. Um, okay, this is the last of those locally identified um zoning articles. Um. This would be an amendment of the personal wireless service facilities um by law under section three E. Uh, five E, excuse me. Um, the intent is to create a definition and allowances. For small cell wireless facilities. Um, that would be located either within. Or on non-residential host structures. You can see some examples of that over here where you might get um. You know, uh, uh, some sort of equipment attached to a light pole or a telephone pole. Um, we right now do allow distributed antenna systems, which are more or less a type of small cell. Wireless services, but our local definition. Um, it is is more limited, so it has to be a part of a. An entire system and it can't be just, you know, one here, one there. Um. But you you have probably seen equipment like this. Um. Uh, around on your on your travels. Um, and then it would also newly allow cell towers. To be located in the official and open space district. Um, so it opens up additional area to install the. The macro, the big installations, and then it also um defines and allows the. Micro or small cell installations um to be located anywhere um. In town. Uh, we're hoping that this and both would be by special permit. None of these are by right. Um, so there's a public review process. Um, but we are hoping it at least presents Hingham. Um, as a little more current um and uh welcoming of. Cell service providers, um, so that uh eventually will have improved service around town.
So what?
If we gotten a request from a cell service provider to have. Small cell wireless facilities, has that been an inquiry that?
Yep, um, so the select board issued um grant of locations to AT&T. To locate small cell wireless um on a couple of utility poles on Fort Hill Street. Uh, Mast D O T likewise authorized AT&T to um install. One on Whiting Street, one on Lincoln Street, three A. Um, but they they're not exempt from zoning. They're just not explicitly authorized, therefore they were presently deemed prohibited. It's a a use not defined, so therefore you need a variance. Um, AT&T in order to now permit under zoning, the installations that have already been authorized by DOT. In the select board um have just today, at least attempted to, but it. There might have been a hiccup with the overnight delivery. Um, they filed applications for each of those installations. Both for variance and then also exercising um at risk. This pending zoning article, so they also filed special permits. Um.
Is Verizon also applying or is it just a AT&T?
Um, AT&T is is the only one that is in hap- like has actually applied. Um, we did hear that Verizon um completed a section one oh six review for an installation on the top of their building. At thirty Green Street, um, but they haven't yet filed the local permits. Uh, with the zoning board. Um, that should be coming shortly.
The reason I'm asking about Verizon is is that Verizon owns. Most of the telephone poles in the town. And that the why that the light company is using the top of and Verizon. Is providing the FiOS and when they provide the FiOS, they're abandoning the copper in place. And they're just cutting the phone lines to the houses and letting them dangle in the street, so. I'm just wondering if any of that is part of this discussion, if Verizon's part of this mix.
Um, it hasn't been yet, but I can reach out to H M L P.
Cause there Verizon's plan is to abandon all of the. Phone line copper in place, those two inch big thick cables that go on the poles and all that stuff and the. Something to think about.
Okay. I wasn't aware of that. Um. Okay.
Given the theft of copper these days because of the value, I suspect that's probably not going to be there for that long.
Problem solved. Um, okay, now we're on to our cleanup articles and this one should look very familiar to you. Um, as a reminder, last year, uh. You advanced an EV charging parking requirement. It was modified through the public hearing process. Both the planning board and um advisory recommended revised language to town meeting. And then the revised language was not printed in the warrant. Um, so town meeting voted on the original language. Um, which did not include the language new or reconstructed parking lots. It just said all parking lots. Um, and I think, you know, the board wanted intended to make it clear that. You don't, this is not a mandate that if you have a parking lot, that's greater than twenty spaces that you immediately have to go. Install EV infrastructure. Um, it's only when you're doing a significant change. Um, as we just saw at Hingham Woods, that it would trigger the requirement. Um, so that is. A true cleanup. Assuming you still want to advance the language that you recommended last year. Um, and then finally, there is basically a typo um that this this signage reference. Um. Amendment would attempt to fix. Uh, I thought this might be one of the ones that you could take action on tonight, but well, given that it's ten thirty. You probably shouldn't take action on any of them. Um, but I think we might need to think about this one a little bit more. Um, so it's basically correcting just a reference in a footnote. Under the signage dimensional table. Um, so right now it says that. Minimum setbacks, you know, they're measured this way. Um, and then says. Uh, you know, these types of signs are not exempt and then says. See also section five B six E. Um, there is no such section. There is a five B six. Which just lays out um the permitting mechanisms for different signs. So this type you need a special permit, this type you need a building permit, this type you don't need any permit. Um, there is a subsection nine E, so this was initiated. Um, our the zoning administrator caught, you know, what appears to be a typo. Um, and we initiated this zoning article. Um, but it's not quite making sense to me when you you read it all together. Um, subsection nine E reads, it's an exemption. It's under section nine is about. Signs that are exempt. Um. And then E relates to memorial building signs or tablet. Denoting the name of a building and or date of erection, not to exceed two square feet here and six square feet here. Et cetera, et cetera. Um. Well, building signs under that table of, you know, signage allowances. Don't have minimum setbacks, so it doesn't make a ton of sense to refer under minimum setbacks. To five B nine E. Um, a tablet, a building sign or tablet, a tablet could be something that's, you know. Inset in the ground or, you know, on a little stone. Um, but limiting something like that to only denoting. The name of a building and or of a building and or date of erection just doesn't seem like how we normally. Have those kind of more ground bounded um signage. I, so I guess I don't. I don't understand what see also this other section means at all. Um, I mean, none of the exempt signs. Would have a minimum setback because they're exempt. So it doesn't seem necessary to refer. To one in particular. Especially when building signs don't have minimum setbacks. So I guess. I just want to think about this one a little bit more. Sorry, we thought this was going to be really easy, but.
It's it's ten thirty.
Yeah. It's it's ten thirty. Um. So that's it. Um, our suggestions would be to take the three state mandated articles. Um, continue those to January twenty ninth, which would be a dedicated zoning article night for. Um, well, in particular, those three and. Any of the others that you may want to continue from tonight. To January twenty second and then thereafter to the twenty ninth. Um.
Emily, should we continue all until the twenty second in case we want to talk about, I don't know, you know, and then we can be on the twenty second, we can then continue those for the twenty ninth, is that, because that gives us the time to post, okay?
I think that's a great idea.
Okay, so then I make a motion and we continue uh the discussion on uh the hearings on. All of the zoning articles presented tonight, um, and they are, I'm just going to go back to the top here. Uh, articles A through article K um to the January twenty second meeting of the planning board starting at seven P M.
Second.
Thank you, Gary. Roll call vote, uh, Tracy.
Hi.
Gordon.
Hi.
Gary.
Hi.
And I'm not involved. Emily, Michael, thank you for your work here. That's, I mean, obviously, uh, there's a lot of zoning articles this year, so it's it's quite a bit of work. Um. Any administrative items that we need to discuss, Emily, Mike?
Hi.
We just have one set of minutes.
It's a Gary, you submitted comments to those minutes, I think, earlier. Do they go to the whole board or they just go to?
I just, I didn't think, I I had to, I didn't think I could distribute them.
Yeah, yeah. So Mike, we might have to. Might have to post Gary's comments. I'm looking here. I can only pull up my phone now.
I can, I can pull them up.
Okay.
Um, Gary, if you want to.
I just was um. Just putting in just some comments that I had made. I listened to the tape and just some comments I had made on the tape. I just thought were topical, so I put them in. On twenty six Zell Street, the other ones, I didn't have any comments on the other. On the other applications.
These are fine. Me, I'm like, obviously you can correct the uh kind of get the spell check and whatnot, but.
Yep.
Yeah.
Gordon, Tracy, any comments on these? Otherwise, we can vote to approve the meeting minutes of the planning board from December eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Yeah, it's discussed by the board tonight.
Okay. But solved.
So moved, okay, good. I'll second that and then um Tracy, quick roll call vote.
Hi.
Gary. Gary.
Hi.
Gordon.
Hi.
And I'm not as well. Emily, Mike, anything else? Otherwise, we're off to the twenty second at seven.
That's right, just a quick question, Kevin, you know, relative to the open meeting law, when, when one has comments on, on minutes, we're not deliberating. But one has comments on minutes, is that something we can distribute to everybody, or is that something that is not allowed under the meeting law? I never could quite figure that meeting law out as to what's eligible and what isn't.
Yeah, I, from my recall, I think they're supposed to go to staff and then. You know, we, we can review them and potentially share revised. A revised draft with the full board, alternatively, you can present them at the meeting.
Okay. So I typically copy the chair, but that's less than a quorum, so I just assume that's okay. Out of courtesy typically, Kurt.
No, it's helpful, Gary, because then we can make sure we, the, the additions are discussed at the meeting that evening.
Yeah, that's all, just for, you know, just for protocol. Okay, that's fine.
All right, so with that, it's ten thirty three P M on January eighth. I'll make a motion that we adjourn this meeting at planning board. Any objections? All right, seeing that, I think we are adjourned. Emily, Michael, thank you for your help tonight. See you in a couple weeks.
Thank you.
Night.